The family-friendly event features a free breakfast, magicians, caricature and balloon artists, face painters, fire and police apparatus displays, a silent auction and prizes and toys for the kids. And all of the entertainment is free. It all takes place Saturday, March 24th from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at LAFD Fire Station 89 located at 7063 Laurel Canyon Boulevard. If you love waffles, then you won't want to miss Waffle Day, celebrated on March 25th every year per the Swedish tradition. Organizers are bringing the fun, food and good times to downtown LA. Enjoy beverages, live music and all the best waffles in LA, from savory to sweet. Festival takes place on March 24th and 25th at Pershing Square. For more, visit wafflesandbeerfest.com. In the heart of La Mert Park thrives a group of community business members with a passion to develop an event rooted in the foundations of culture, art, music and community. On the last Sunday of the month, La Mert Park Village invites the public over to enjoy a day filled with art exhibits, music, fashion, food, drumming and other creative endeavors for the whole family. Plenty of DJ spinning, rymers rappin' and poets of the spoken word combined with traditional artists and the legendary drum circle. Don't miss the fun on Sunday, March 25th at La Mert Park Village. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
I'll pack up your bags and hop on Metrolink. Let's take Metrolink to San Juan Capistrano. Take Metrolink's Orange County Line or inland Empire Orange County Line and exit San Juan Capistrano. Welcome to the Los Rios Historic District. After exiting Metrolink, cross the tracks and you'll find Sarduchis. Welcome to Sarduchis. Sarduchis is an historic site and was originally built in 1894 as Capistrano Depot. It was then renovated in 1974-75 as a restaurant. Not only is Sarduchis in the heart of the Los Rios Historic District, they're Metrolink Rewards partners too. By showing your valid Metrolink ticket, you can get a deliciously discounted meal. While you're in San Juan Capistrano, follow the roadmap to Ortega Highway and check out the opulent Mission Basilica San Juan Capistrano. The Mission was established in 1776 and is considered to be the birthplace of Orange County. Once you walk into the basilica, you can marvel at the ornate statues and wonderful architecture. It's truly a sight to see. Within the Los Rios Historic District, you can find Zumar's petting zoo.
We believe that being with animals makes us better people. We believe that spending time with family and friends makes the world a better place. We believe that fresh air, sunshine, celebrations and laughter are good for the soul. That's why we're here.
With Metrolink, you can explore historical Southern California with your family and friends.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Okay, good morning, good morning all. Shhh. Everyone would please take their seats. Everyone, please take your seats so that we can begin our meeting for today. It's Friday, the 23rd of March. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Pullman Phil Bonnabuscano Sodio Anglar Harris Dawson Weeza Karetz, Corin Martinez Oferal Press, Rodriguez Rue Wesson, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, First Order of Business.
Approval of the minutes.
Rodriguez moves, Karetz seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Uh, Weeza moves and Buscaino seconds, next.
Mr. President, Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1A and F be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, that Item 1E be received and filed in as much as the subject property was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing, and that Item B be continued to April 24.
Okay, so without objection, so order. You have cards on this item?
Yes, sir, we do.
Then let us, shhh. Let us continue.
Items 2 and 3 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 3 should be held on the desk until such time as the forthcoming Rules, Elections and Intergovernmental Relations Committee report has been submitted, posted and circulated. Item 2 is before you, sir.
Let's do that, let's hold 3. Vote on 2, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, move on.
Item 4 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on this item?
Yes, sir, we do.
Then continue.
On the continuation agenda, Item 5-
No, wait a minute, wait a minute. Shhh. Please, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Item 5 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, um, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that takes counsel back to presentations. Item called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Thank you. Everybody alright? Okay. Sergeants, if you could, uh... I want to bring up Mr. Murphy. Sean Murphy. You have Items 1 and 4 and your general public comment. So if we give him two minutes. Go ahead, Sean, come on.
Yes, good morning. Item number 1, I am supporting. Item number, item number 4, I'm supporting. Uh, general public comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, we had that big, lot of streets were flooding during the rainstorm the last two F days. They, Parthenia, especially Parthenia. God, nobody can walk on Parthenia when it's... You need to fix, do something about Parthenia Street in Pampama City. Nobody can walk on it.
Thank you. Mr. Weeza, are you ready to start today? So, Mr. Weeza, you have the floor.
Good morning, how are you, sir? Good morning. And happy Nauru's, everyone. Los Angeles has always been a melting pot of cultures, as we know. Angelinos represent a myriad of people from countries and cultures and who speak hundreds of different languages. We are people who hail from all corners of the earth. And the sum of all those experiences to me embodies the very meaning of the word Angelinos. And that is that our diversity is inherent in our Ale DNA. And today, we once again gather to embrace our diversity and celebrate our multi-ethnic communities. I'm honored to join Councilmember Karetz, our mayor Eric Garcetti, Controller Ron Galperin and others to celebrate Nauru's, the Persian New Year.
That's worth a round of applause.
I would like to thank the Nauru Celebration Foundation and the many individuals who were involved in making today possible. Special thank you to Michael Delajani, Amid Bedad, Poria Abasi, Mariam Azarbayjani, Amir Tabak, Baman Majalal, David Rahimian and the others who assisted along with Albert Miraboso. Let's give them all a big round of applause for their hard work. Thank you so much. This is a day celebrated throughout Los Angeles and across the globe for transcending nationalities and promoting the values of peace and solidarity between nations, generations and within families. Colleagues, we have been honoring Nauru's with all of you and our special guests today for many years. But I believe that this year, more than ever, it is imperative we celebrate what Nauru's means to us here at Angelinos, given what we see across the country. In contrast to the national dialogue that vilifies the Iranian community as well as other immigrant communities, we stand here today in unity and solidarity. We hear so much hateful dialogue directed at immigrants, the very people who are the fabric of our nation and certainly our city. Here in Los Angeles, we know our history and in a nation founded by immigrants, we are a city of immigrants. This year, we proudly acknowledge and support the Iranian-American youth who are the focus of this year's Nauru Celebration. We want to remind them that their hopes and dreams are our hopes and dreams. And if their hard-working parents are any indication, we expect the youth will thrive as they create their own versions of the American dream. Iranian-Americans are one of the most entrepreneurial groups. About 50% of all working Iranian-Americans are in professional and managerial occupations. This entrepreneurial spirit has been beneficial to economic development. Iranian-Americans today are college deans, CEOs in corporate America, senior executives at Fortune 500 companies, top scientists in NASA, executives in Silicon Valley. And here in Los Angeles, they are many of our city engineers, information technology professionals, managers and throughout many other departments. Los Angeles will not be the same without the contributions Persian-Americans have made to industries and development in the city. Through the Nauru Celebration, the Persian-American community brings a rich tradition to the city of Los Angeles that promotes compassion for our fellow human beings irrespective of ethnicity or religion. That is a value we share and something we all need to embrace. May we, may we all be blessed in this coming year. Many and all Angelinos will find happiness, success and prosperity in the Persian New Year. Nauru's, Mubarak, everyone. Congratulations. With that, let me introduce my colleague, Mr. Karetz, who's been a strong supporter of the Persian community here in Los Angeles and has been helping put on the Nauru Celebration in Los Angeles for many, many years. Councilmember Karetz.
Salaam. Edashoma, Mubarak. It's wonderful to be here to wish everyone a very happy Nauru's. I'm honored to join my colleague Jose Weeza today to celebrate the blessings of the new year and to recognize our vibrant Persian community here in the city of Los Angeles. I'd like to thank everyone who worked so hard to put this beautiful celebration together in City Hall, giving the opportunity for non-Persians to get a glimpse of the colorful Iranian culture. Nauru's, which is Persian for new day, marks the first day of spring and the beginning of the year in the Iranian calendar. It is a day where families come together, gather around their beautiful ceremonial half-seen table decorated with items that symbolize spring and renewal, listen to music and enjoy delicious Persian food. I have the great pleasure of representing the 5th Council District, which is home to the largest population of Persians in Los Angeles. Sometimes my district is known as Tarangelous. And I'm proud to recognize that Los Angeles is stronger and richer because of the many communities who celebrate this wonderful occasion. In 2010, we named an intersection on Westwood Boulevard Persian Square, helping to give the Persian community the recognition it deserves. This intersection is of particular significance because of the very first Persian business in the city- in the city opening in nineteen seventy-four on the corner of Westwood Boulevard and Wilkins Avenue. Since then, there's been a growing number of Persian businesses and residents in the area. Our local Persian businesses and residents of the Westwood area have been a magnificent gift to all of us in the Fifth District and across Los Angeles. They've blessed us and enriched us with dynamic culture and commerce, as well as many priceless friendships. The Persian community, like other robust immigrant communities, helps make our city great, and my hope is to continue working with the community to honor their heritage for many years to come. Last year was especially monumental, uh, for the Persian community as we celebrated the unveiling of the Freedom Sculpture, which some are calling the Statue of Liberty of the West, based on the Cyrus Cylinder from twenty-five hundred years ago, celebrating individual freedom, multicultural existence, and religious tolerance for the Persian community and for all. And thanks to the Farhang Foundation, the unveiling festival became one of the most significant cultural events in the city of Los Angeles, with an estimated crowd of over seventy-five thousand admirers coming to, uh, to join us. I'm tremendously proud of the contributions of the Persian community, who have provided the city with a rich array of traditions, which have no doubt transformed Los Angeles. The Persian community has truly woven their beautiful culture into the fabric of the city. This year's Nouruz celebration will continue with a festival on Sunday afternoon at Pershing Square at Westwood Boulevard and Wilkins Avenue. I'll also be hosting a different Nouruz celebration at Persian Square with a special unveiling of Persian-themed artwork on utility boxes on Westwood Boulevard. Please join me in celebrating this on Thursday, March twenty-ninth, at Westwood and Wilkins at noon. It's my honor to be a sponsor of the Westwood Festival, and my hope is to make the Westwood Nouruz celebration bigger and better every year. I invite all of you to attend this wonderful festival and look forward to seeing everyone there. Los Angeles is a great city, and it's so much greater because of the efforts and contributions to this community. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate together, and I wish you the best for the year thirteen ninety-seven. Mercy and Nouruz it'sun peruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koritz, and another great friend of the Persian community is our very own Mayor Eric Garcetti, who despite his busy schedule, I understand, wanted to make sure he was here to celebrate Nouruz with all of us. So please welcome our mayor, Eric Garcetti.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Well, Nouruz Mubarak, and thank you so much to, um, our great council members, the twin pillars from Pershing Square to Persian Square, uh, the two of them, and so many of you, fifteen of you, who all have Iranian-Americans in your district, celebrate today, uh, one of the happiest days in Los Angeles as Nouruz and a new day came. It's perfect, after the rains, we see sun coming out outside, this is the day when the most beautiful flowers are in front of everybody in their council seats, reminds of, of the freshness and the possibility of each new year. Um, I also want to thank our Controller Ron Galperin, uh, and Assemblymember Nazarian, who's going to be here as well, um, and all of us, who take this time to make sure we recognize the people in this place, who themselves trace their ancestry back to Iran, um, something that we can be proud of, the number of deputies and general managers and people who have been commissioners and served today, all of that is a reflection of the strength of this community. And it's not just one district, it's all of Los Angeles that's Tarangels. I grew up, as I joke, in a Persian suburb called Insino, uh, as a young man, but all of us know that the contributions of this community in culture, in art, in politics, in the economy, have been second to none, and we are so proud to be the largest population of Iranians outside of Iran. Uh, we even have a nascent sister city agreement with Tehran that one day we dream of really revitalizing and bringing back, because those people-to-people contacts are what makes this earth safe, it's what makes us all secure, it's what grows our understanding of cultures. We have some of the best chefs, uh, culinary visionaries that are here that bring us a hafzine with delicacies. One of Jonathan Gold's great articles, if you remember, was how he ate Pico Boulevard. I'd like to suggest maybe he should eat Westwood Boulevard, because going from place to place, uh, in Tarangels, he could grab an, uh, abghust stew at a Tari sandwich shop, then walk across the street to saffron and rose ice cream for the famous golobobol, and then visit the recently unveiled Freedom Sculpture that, uh, Councilmember Koritz mentioned, which is modeled after the Cyrus Cylinder, and one of history's great archaeological finds, a relic that is covered in cuneiform script, it details the conquest of Babylon by Perses, Akhenaten, King Cyrus the Great. Now, the Magna Carta was signed in twelve fifteen, it's often considered the first declarations of rights, religious freedom, and rule of law, of the obligations of the governing to the governed. Well, the Cyrus Cylinder from five thirty-nine BCE has the Magna Carta beat, uh, by about seventeen hundred and fifty years, and both that cylinder and that sculpture are enduring reminders of the sanctity of the rights of all people, wherever they are. Um, I'm reminded last year, just over a year ago, when many of us were in the airport, and an Iranian immigrant who I met named Ali Vagyan, who came here, uh, thinking that his paperwork was all squared away, but a change in an executive directive suddenly put him in limbo and sent him back after he arrived here in Los Angeles, back to Iran at great personal risk. We were able to work hard to find him, and he was able to get out before his personal safety was endangered and come here. And when I saw the flowers and the Persian community and civil rights activists who stood up and said, "This is who we are as a city, that everyone belongs here," we replayed what every single one of the individuals and their families have gone through coming here before, that this is indeed a gateway and a new beginning. So it's fitting that our city in many ways is a Nouruz, it is a new day, every single time somebody gets off a plane, somebody arrives here for the first time and sees this verdant place and this beautiful land, to remind us that there's love all around us, that we cherish the life that we are lent by our maker, and that we hope that this spring fills our city of angels with hope in our future, bright with opportunity. Again, Nouruz Mubarak, have a great New Year, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And now we'll hear from another great friend of the Persian community, someone who's with us each and every year to celebrate Nouruz, Controller Ron Galperin.
Good morning, everybody, thank you, Mayor Garcetti, thank you, honorable council members, and Edashoma Mubarak, happy New Year. Uh, the New Year and the start of spring are really a celebration of renewal, and part of the beauty of Nouruz is that it unites us, unites people of different faiths and backgrounds, to bid farewell to the cold winter and collectively welcome the blossoming spring. It's also a uniquely secular tradition, and it bears noting that we think of the part of the world of Iran that doesn't have a great deal of secular traditions, and yet that is very much the case, and it's one of harmony, and the symbolism that you see of Nouruz is very much the symbolism that we also see in Passover and in Easter, particularly around the egg and around the hafzine plate. As we celebrate the Persian New Year and the incredible, incredible Persian community of LA, we're also acutely aware, however, that the people of Iran, as we know, live under a cloud of a government that continues to deny basic human rights. Yet their hopes and the hopes of the Iranian community here in Los Angeles are really highlighted during Nouruz, of rejuvenation, of hope, of compassion, of rebirth, of the drive for a better life, particularly those who have come to Los Angeles from Iran. And I'm a first-generation American, my parents also came to this country to realize a better life for their children and for their grandchildren and for generations after that, just like so many of the Iranian-Americans who came here and who've contributed immensely to the fabric of our nation and the fabric particularly of this city of Los Angeles. So, Edashoma Mubarak, may you and may we all have a happy and a blessed New Year, Nouruz
Mr. Weezer, uh, bef— before you go on, and I do have a member on the, the queue here, I need to sense, well, I need to ask my good friends, you know, Mr. Delajani, Puri, uh, David, now, the mayor, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Galperin, and Mr. Koritz have all done the best they could to speak in some kind of language. I want you to gauge which one of them has been the best. So somebody's going to have to answer that question. So with that, so the three, the three of you need to huddle, so when you come up, I want to know who gets the, who gets the award, is it the mayor, is it the controller, is it Councilmember Koritz, or is it Mr. Weezer? Mr. Weezer, back to you.
It's the Council President.
No, no, no.
Mr. President, if I had known this was a challenge, I would have been practicing all night. Thank you. Um, and now, uh, let me introduce to you a very special, uh, guest who's with us here today, Ariel Yael Mokhtar Zadeh, President of the UCLA Undergraduate Student Association Council. Please give her a big round of applause.
Welcome.
Good morning. I cannot tell you how honored and humbled I am to be standing before you all and to be standing alongside this beautiful community. My name is Ariel Yael Mokhtar Zadeh, I am a proud Iranian-American Jew, an overly ecstatic Bruin studying communications with a double minor in Public Affairs and Israel Studies at UCLA, and I have the unique privilege of serving all thirty thousand undergraduate Bruins as the President of the Undergraduate Student Association Council. I first and foremost want to thank Mr. Puri Abasi for inviting me here today. I am humbled to have the opportunity to speak to you all, especially with this year's theme, immigrant youth. My family immigrated from Iran to the United States in the nineteen seventies, my father to pursue academic opportunity, and my mother to escape religious persecution. I grew up sitting in the lap of my paternal grandmother, Mama June Farah, as she told me stories of her upbringing in Tehran. My sister and I were always the last to leave the dinner table anytime we had dinner with my paternal grandfather, Baba June Farahad, afraid to miss any sliver of his life story. I was a permanent fixture on the armchair of my maternal grandfather Baba June, he always invited me to practice my Farsi with him, and at least attempted to hide his chuckle at the sound of my horrific accent. And I could always count on my maternal grandmother, Mama June, to shower me in blessings, enough to bless me and the next six generations. Choshbache alam bashi, that was the blessing my grandparents always put upon me. For our English-speaking friends in the audience, this phrase translates to, "May you be the good fortune of the world." Only in the last few years of my life do I believe I've developed the maturity and sense of awareness to truly appreciate the sacrifices my family, our families, made to get us to where we are today. Our parent— our parents left a country that our families had called home for generations. Some left to escape religious and political persecution, others left seeking greater opportunity, educationally, economically, and socially, for themselves and their families. Our families made every last sacrifice to ensure that we would be able to become anything we ever dreamed of. But of course, being the child of immigrants also came with its challenges. For years, I myself struggled to attempt to straddle two worlds, what felt like the American world of my future and the Iranian world of my past. Only at the age of twenty-two have I been able to recognize that my struggles were futile. The decision to pick one of the two worlds wasn't really a decision at all. I am proud of the delicious but very pungent jhoresh I bring to lunch for school at school. I walk, or rather dance, to class every day, singing along to my favorite Mortazapishai and Sammy Begi songs. And I have never and will never shy away from repeating my last name as many times as it takes until my professors, my friends, and my peers can at least get close to pronouncing My family, our families jeopardize far too much for us to shy away from being proud of who we are. They gave up too much for us to succumb to the compromise of this world or that. In the same way that our families paved their own paths where none existed, so too do we have the responsibility to pave our own. If I, if we have seen further, it is by standing on the shoulders of giants. If we have been sheltered from the harsher realities of their past, it is by standing in the warmth and safety of their embrace. If we have grown taller, it is because they ensured that we would be rooted in when, where they came from, where we came from. If we ever succeed, it is because of them and every sacrifice they made to ensure that we would have every opportunity to succeed, even when inhibiting their own success. I would be remiss to not publicly acknowledge and thank my parents today. Thank you for the sacrifices you made to give me every, every opportunity I could ever dream of. Thank you for always reminding me to be grateful for the freedom that living in this country has afforded me, even as I strive to work to make it a more equitable place for all. Thank you for continuing to support me in paving my path, even pulling out your shovels to help me dig along the way. Thank you for your courage, your support, your perspective, your wisdom, and most importantly, your love. Choshbache alam bashi, may you be the good fortune of the world. I could almost hear it in my grandmother's voices as I hear it echo through the chambers today. It wasn't ever just a blessing, how could it be? It was our call to action. As the children of immigrants, we know that we have an obligation, an obligation to make something of ourselves, to make something of our past, and to make something of our future. I will never forget the day that I called my grandmother to tell her I'd been elected student body president at UCLA. "You brought honor to our name," she said. Our native speaking, uh, native, native Farsi speakers in the audience know that the name Mokhtar Zadeh literally translates to descendants of the village leader. I hadn't brought honor to our name, my namesake had brought purpose to my life. So, to my fellow first-generation American and immigrant youth in the audience, may we continue to answer the call of the generations who came before us, may we continue to give thanks to, for all we have, while continuing to seek to fulfill the promise of our family's sacrifice, and most importantly, may we continue to work to be the good fortune of the world. Choshbache alam bashing, we know no other way. Salaam Mubarak, and thank you.
Ariel's cousin is seated next to me, and he wanted to say hello, and I bet they have some very exciting exchanges over the dinner table, UCLA and USC. Let's give Ariel another round of applause. And his name is Jordan, by the way.
Mr. President, I'm sure that, uh, the person from UCLA speaks better Farsi. I think Councilmember Sadiq would agree with that. Um, thank you so much, and well said, Ariel, and I think, uh, that shows us what the promise is in this great country, uh, from immigrants and children of immigrants, and we congratulate you, Ariel, you are a shining example of what it all means to achieve and pursue the American dream, congratulations to you. Next, I would like to bring up Mr. Mike Arnold, who is the President and CEO of the Midnight Mission. Midnight Mission has served the disadvantage of Los Angeles for over a hundred years. It is the oldest continuously operating human service organization in Los Angeles. Please welcome Mike Arnold from the Midnight Mission.
Good morning and welcome. This year marks the seventh year of our partnership with the Iranian-American community to bring Nouruz to the men, women, and children in Skid Row. The Midnight Mission has been a beacon of hope and renewal since its inception over a hundred and three years ago. Every day, we serve over three thousand meals, hand out hundreds of grocery bags of food, household supplies, hundreds of hygiene kits, housing over two hundred and seventy-one men and women experiencing homelessness in Skid Row every day, providing education, health, and mental health services, career and job training, and job placement. Additionally, we keep another hundred and fifty people safe every night. We realized about eight years ago that the Midnight Mission really embodies the spirit of this ancient holidays, our values and philosophies that the past does not define a person's future, that hope is the beginning of recovery, that regaining one's dignity signals the beginning of a new life off the streets. And as a result of that, we've been partnering with the Iranian-American community to provide Nouruz to the residents of Skid Row every year. A critical part of Nouruz that no one has mentioned yet, uh, is also that of giving back to the community, of helping those who are less fortunate. And we've recognized that with the Midnight Mission where everyone is welcome, no one is turned away regardless of religion, national origin, gender, or sexual orientation, that we represented a partnership every day by working with those men and women who have lost their homes and community, and provide that opportunity to regain their hope, dignity, and self-worth. We're proud to share these values and extremely honored and humbled to be partners with the Iranian-American community who jointly celebrate Nouruz with us. And normally, I would be here inviting you to join us for Nouruz, but our Nouruz was last Friday, so, uh, you missed a— So you missed a great event. There were over 2,000 people that participated in a festival of great Iranian food, dance, music, and, and well-wishing. So just wanted to report back to you that it was a great thing and how proud we are at the Midnight Mission to be partnering with the Iranian-American community in helping to give back to the community that we serve. So thank you very much. Thank you to the Iranian-American community for all their support.
Thank you so much, Mike, and thank you for your continuous work to help our fellow neighbors. Our next speaker is Mr. Poria Abassi. Poria is the former General Manager of the Los Angeles Convention Center, no stranger to these hallways. He is as well a board member of the Nouruz Foundation. He will make a few comments in Farsi, the native language of Iran, for the Farsi-speaking audience of this program throughout the world. Please welcome Mr. Poria Abassi.
Poria, so good to see you again. You're always welcome.
I'm blessed with the opportunity. So before Farsi, we start with a few words in English. Dear members of the City Council and honorable guests, for 15 years, you've honored us by recognizing the benevolence of the most prized symbol of the Persian heritage, Nouruz. We've spoken in these chambers about all the things that bring us together and all the notions that make Los Angeles the greatest city on earth. Today, when the very notion of being different, speaking with a different accent, being born in a different place, practicing different religion, and worshiping the same God, and observing different customs is under threat, it is once again Los Angeles that continues to embrace all of us immigrants with all our differences. However, the true American story of immigrants does not end with us as the first generation. For the notion of celebration of diversity to be sustained, it has to reverberate through every generation. The celebration in these chambers, where you have purposefully and willfully valued what we have to offer and celebrated our history and culture, has allowed our sons and daughters, like Ariel, who have been born and raised here to find pride in their own heritage and to translate that pride into making Los Angeles an even greater and more inviting metropolis for all that come here looking for a better future. Thus, the story of Nouruz is no different than the American immigrant story. When after a cold winter of discontent and a year with its share of calamity and difficulty for so many people from so many backgrounds all around our nation, spring offers the promise of new beginnings, of opportunities to make their wrongs right, and the resolve to make it a better world for everyone. May we all be blessed with health, love, and peace in the coming year, and may we all have the ample opportunity to show and practice much care and compassion in the new year. As this program is being captured and broadcast worldwide to many Farsi-speaking corners of the world, with your permission, I would like to extend the best wishes in Farsi. As janabesh shahre Los Angeles, anjuman shahre Los Angeles, shahdar shahre Los Angeles, noruz barstanirabe tamami merduman das sartasar jahan tabrik gofte, aarizu isali por az mehr aashdi osol, braaay hamey merduman daray. Noruzetan piruz, harozetan noruz.
And Mr. President, that was the best pronunciation.
But as I was thinking about this, Mr. President, I think I'm gonna vote for the mayor since he signs our ordinances.
Smart choice.
It was a close second by Mr. Galperin since he oversees our accounting system for the city, so, and our paycheck, so.
Poor Paul. I recognize that you tried.
Thank you very much. And thank you, as we do every year here in these council chambers, I'd like to also take a little moment to commend and remember our longtime friend, founder of the Nouruz Foundation, the late Azat Delajani, his sons Michael and Sharamin. Michael is here with us today. They continue the legacy of their father. More than a dozen years ago, Mr. Delajani had a vision to make the Nouruz celebration worldwide. He started implementing his vision by personally founding and financing the Nouruz Foundation and held the first Nouruz celebration event in this chamber. And if you think that one person cannot make a difference, know that today, Nouruz celebrations take place throughout this nation, and know that Azat Delajani made that difference. So let's take a moment to commend him. Thank you so much to the Delajani family.
And Mr. Weezer, I do have two members on the queue, so whenever...
You could go with the members now if that's okay.
Okay, why don't I recognize Mr. Rue, David Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank Councilman Hweezer, Councilman Karats, our mayor and our comptroller for bringing this wonderful presentation, and happy Friday and happy Nouruz. And this is an event I look forward to every year because not only does it mark the beginning of spring, but of course, the amazing food, and it's an opportunity for us to all get together with friends and family. And as Councilmember Hweezer stated, the contribution of the Persian-American community is undeniable. There are many doctors, many lawyers, many individuals, but we also have many civic leaders. And I like to point out two of them, which is my very own Field Director, Nikki Azari, and my Case Manager, Milan Minassian. And not only my staff, but their entire family, both their parents, their aunts and cousins are all here. If I could have them stand, the Minassians and the Azaris. And I like to point out that Milan's father is also one of our very own inspectors at the Department of Building and Safety. So thank you, sir, for all your service. But this is a great holiday, and Persian-Americans have a rich history and incredible culture, and we are blessed in the city of Los Angeles to celebrate with this community. So happy Nouruz. Thank you.
Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you all for bringing us this great celebration of Nouruz again this year. I especially want to thank the Delajani family and, of course, all of our colleagues for, for presenting such a beautiful commemoration again of Nouruz. This is always one of the, one of my favorite presentations of the year because it is a time of renewal and of optimism for the future. And sometimes lately, it seems hard to be optimistic about the future and especially about the part of the world where my family and your families come from. And when we see some of the things, actions that have been taken by the current administration targeting immigrants from all over the world, it becomes especially hard to be optimistic. But I'm always inspired by this gathering together that we have for, for Nouruz, by this community, of which I feel kind of a kinship, a cousin, as the first Armenian-American to be elected to these chambers. The Persian Empire, of course, conquered Armenia multiple times. I don't hold a grudge. I don't hold a grudge. Because in the spirit of Nouruz, it's also true that Iran was a welcoming place for so many Armenians and continues to be. It's a place that so much of my community, my immigrant community came from as well. And like many of your families endured the civil war, endured revolution, and, and all that comes with that, the loss of belongings, the loss of connection to ancient lands that your, you know, villages that your families have lived in for centuries, and so many of you were uprooted from those places and had to have, find a new beginning here in Los Angeles, like so many other peoples from so many other parts of the world have done here in this city. And you inspire all of us with your optimism, having gone through those experiences, having found a new beginning here, and having created something new and amazing and invested in this city and invested in its future. You really do inspire us all. And Ariel, I don't know how to say "fight on" in Farsi. If I did, I would roll it out. But despite your choice, I really, you are really emblematic of the future, not only of the Persian community, but I think of all of Los Angeles in your experience, in your commitment to your culture, and your commitment to your future here in Los Angeles. You really are emblematic of Nouruz and of all that makes Los Angeles great. So thank you all very much for being with us again. Oh, and I do need to acknowledge also, the mayor did earlier, but I was blessed to have as my Chief of Staff the first Iranian-born Chief of Staff, I think, in this building, who is now Assembly Member, Adrien Nazarian, who also started the first Nouruz celebration in Sacramento in our state legislature as well. He couldn't be with us today, but he sends his best as well, and thank you all very much. Happy Nouruz.
Great, thank you.
Well said, Mr. Kokorian. Mr. Weezer, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we have a very special presentation. I understand this past Wednesday, there was a roast, and the person who was roasted, his name was pronounced a million different ways. So keep in that spirit, Mr. Blumenfeld is here to join us with a special presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. And to get in on the, the language competition, Nouruz idan mubarak. I don't expect to win, but I appreciate you allowing me to...
But you might place.
Yeah, exactly. I appreciate you allowing me to add a little postscript, an exciting postscript to this wonderful Nouruz celebration. And this idea was brought to me by John and Barbara Ardalan, who are here and who are constituents of mine. And, and when you talk about Tyranulos and, and all of the, the culture that's here, the one place you didn't mention is Tarzana Woodland Hills. We have a tremendous number of, of Persians there, and it is a real center of activity. Exactly. The mayor knows it. And, and out of that, that culture and, and that area of our Los Angeles, we have some amazing artists. We have artists, amazing artists right here. In fact, I understand that the, the calligrapher who, who has the presentation is also Persian, Albert Mirbasim. So I want to acknowledge him. But we have a, an artist who is very well-known in the Persian community and has agreed to donate, has, has offered to donate a, a wonderful piece of art that we're going to unveil in a moment before he says a few words about it. It is the, it's called "The Influence of Cyrus the Great's Vision on the U.S. Constitution", and it depicts the fact that the founding fathers of the United States, especially Thomas Jefferson, John Adams, and Benjamin Franklin, were strongly influenced by Cyrus the Great's legacy of governance based on respect for freedom, religion, customs, language, and tradition. You alluded, the mayor alluded to, to some of this already. So as a country, we owe a debt, a debt of gratitude to Cyrus and the Persian culture for the incorporation of tolerance and diversity into the structure of government. So Davud, if you would, if you would come up for a moment, I know he wants to say a word, if we could unveil the picture, and he's gonna, which he has donated to the city of Los Angeles. And Mr. Rustai, welcome, and if you could just take just a brief moment to tell us about, about the picture that you have donated to the, to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning. I am so proud and happy that I am here with my lovely American friends. I love you all. I paint the funding father, funding fathers of America and how they related to the thing of Cyrus the Great in Cyropedia from Xenophon. This is a gift for city. I love you all and thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Ardalan. Thank you, John Ardalan and Dr. Parsinia.
Thank you, sir. Let's give him another round of applause for this wonderful gift. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we'd love to present this resolution and on behalf of the mayor, the City Council, to the Nouruz Foundation and to the Persian-American community, congratulations, happy Nouruz, and thank you for bringing so much vitality, energy to the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, happy Nouruz.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Okay, one more round of applause. Thank you all for coming. Okay, and as they are exiting to the side and the back, why don't we, Madam Clerk Turk, take up item three?
And, Mr. President, a committee report for that matter has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. On that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Ms. Martinez.
President.
Go right ahead.
Due to information of potential pending decision regarding the California water fix at MWD, I'd like to reconsider item 19 from this past Wednesday meeting, the 21st. It's Agenda Council File 17-0930-S2, and I'd like to continue this item for further discussion in council for our next meeting on Wednesday, March 28th.
Okay, so let's first vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And with that said, we will continue this item, Mr. Clerk, until March 28th. Ms. Martinez?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for yesterday.
We gotta have it to the council, man, so. Great to see you. Great to see you, too. Yeah, let's keep it away from the... Yeah, let's keep it away from the...
Okay, Mr. Price, when everybody, when our first presentation moves to the side in the back, the floor will be yours. And we'll send item three forthwith.
Almost 38 years ago, the world lost a man that embodied the voice of the voiceless. A voice that has transcended time to harmonize those seeking justice and equality. Compassion, morality, justice, and advocacy were ingrained in his teachings and in his speeches. Archbishop Oscar Romero's words are as relevant today as they were during the war, civil war in El Salvador. A country which I had the pleasure of visiting recently, I was moved when I visited Oscar Romero's humble home and the chapel where he was ultimately assassinated in, March 24th, 1980, for denouncing a crackdown on leftist opponents of the country's then military government. He lived his life amongst the poor to serve them and to protect them. His cause was one of social justice. Knowing that his teachings would inevitably lead to his death for his outspoken rhetoric, he once proclaimed, "I do not believe in death without resurrection. If they kill me, I will rise again in the people of El Salvador." A martyr that the Vatican has recently announced that Oscar Romero will be... A martyr that Vatican has recently announced that Oscar Romero will be canonized as a Roman Catholic saint. His life not only, touches lives not only in Salvador but in Los Angeles as well. Tomorrow, March 24th, 2018, will be the 38th anniversary of his martyrdom. And March will be known as the month of remembrance of Archbishop Oscar Romero of El Salvador in Los Angeles. Oscar Romero's life has and continues to inspire many to go forward and to become agents of change in uplifting their community. Such is the case of Mr. Carlos Vacanaro, Director of the Salvadorian American Leadership Education Fund, SALF, a proud Salvadorian with deep roots in his country and a true champion for the Salvadorian community. Carlos and friends are here today to share some remarks.
Welcome, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Councilmember Price, thank you very much for your leadership. If God accepts the sacrifice of my life, may my death be for the freedom of my people. A bishop will die, but the church of God, which is the people, will never perish. As we remember the suffering and the pain caused by the war in the early 80s, we must not forget that the causes of that pain and suffering continue in El Salvador, which is injustice, poverty, and the fact that those who killed Monsignor Romero are still in power. They still control El Salvador through economic means. And that's very unfortunate, because the poor are controlled by the mass communication media. And unfortunately, because of that, the poor think like the rich but live like poor. They think like the rich but eat like poor, die like poor. And they are the ones who are electing those who killed Monsignor Romero 38 years ago, like those who elected our president here in the United States. As we continue the fight for social justice in El Salvador, we must continue the legacy of Monsignor Romero of compassion, the legacy of working for the poor. Last night, we celebrated the 35th anniversary of Clinica Monsignor Romero, an important legacy of the Salvadorian community here in Los Angeles. Tomorrow, we're going to celebrate the 38th anniversary of the killing of Monsignor Romero. But as we remember those painful days, we also have hope. And as you know, as Councilmember Price just mentioned, Pope Francis announced three weeks ago the canonization of Monsignor Romero. And what a better way to pay tribute to Monsignor Romero than canonizing him. So we, as Salvadorian community, are very happy that that is going to become a reality. Monsignor Romero has been a saint for us for many years, but next year, he's going to be canonized by Pope Francis. Every year, SALF, the Los Angeles and Salvador assisted city committee and Clinica Monsignor Romero and the Salvadoran community in Los Angeles ask a member of the City Council to join us to celebrate this day and to celebrate his legacy and his life. And this year, Councilmember Price has graciously joined us, and he just came back from El Salvador. But in previous years, we have had Councilmember Cedillo, Councilmember O'Farrell, and others, because they all represent us in the city of Los Angeles, the Salvadoran community. And we ask you to continue supporting us. We thank you for your support. And to those who have visited El Salvador to understand the history and culture of El Salvador, we thank you. And we invite those who haven't been in El Salvador to visit us. So thank you again for your continued support on behalf of the Salvadoran American community in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Price, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing Carlos Vacarono and what I think are probably some of the scholarship recipients from SALF, Salvadoran American Leadership Fund. This is a very, very important event tomorrow, the 38th anniversary of his murder. But I just have to say, as someone who represents a large portion of the Salvadoran community here in Los Angeles, and knowing that outside of El Salvador, we are the largest population of Salvadorans anywhere in the world, we have an obligation to, I think, carry on in the spirit of Monsignor Oscar Romero. Big, big supporter of Clinica Romero, which is in my district, and all the incredible work that you do. And I just have to say that what an incredible legacy that you are bringing to life for this remarkable man all these years later. I can't imagine that in his own life, he would have imagined that the legacy that he has left would help so many countless thousands of people, literally the tens of thousands of individuals that receive health care at little or no cost. And I mentioned this last night at the gala, I can't even imagine what Westlake would be like if Clinica Romero was not there. And in a few years, we'll have to rename the clinic, we'll have to rename it Saint Oscar Romero, Clinica Romero. And it was such a great honor to be with you nearly three years ago for his beatification in El Salvador, remarkable trip. And I just want to just say hats off to the incredible legacy that you're living out and the contributions to Los Angeles culture and society, and what an inspiration you are for me and thousands of others who would have otherwise never, ever known about his life. But his legacy lives on through you, and you're inspiring people across the city and across the country, and you're motivating us to a greater sense of enlightenment, and as a consequence, a greater sense of purpose in how we serve the public. So congratulations, and thank you for all you've done and all you will do.
Let's give him a round of applause. Well said, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Price, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just on behalf of a grateful and appreciative city, we want to just acknowledge again the outstanding work of Father Oscar Romero and the life he has had, not just on Salvadorans but on all of us, and we appreciate the legacy.
Thank you.
Great photo. Again, thank you, Mr. Price, and Carlos, thank you so much. Okay, you know what, Mr. Clerk, I think I'm going to take some general public comment right now. Andrea Leon Grossman, John Gerardo, please come forward. Annie Goggan, if you're still here, please come forward. One second, let me get it quiet for you. Go right ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman. I represent Food and Water Watch, and today I'm here to speak in favor of the motion to direct LEDWP to study 100% clean renewable energy for their next integrated resource plan. We need this. We still have the most toxic air in the nation, and we, right now, LEDWP thinks that 65% of clean renewable energy in their 20-year plan is acceptable. It's not. Food and Water Watch, we just study getting 100% renewable energy by 2030. We have that study available, and we would love to share it with all you. We already had some council office visits, and we would love to share it with you all. So we need this motion to be supported by all of you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John Gerardo, Vice President of Preservation Issues for Hollywood Heritage. Hollywood Heritage Incorporated applauds Councilmembers David Rue and Herb Wesson for their absolutely critical opposition resolution to SB 827. Councilmembers, please support for the protection of the city's historic districts, which indeed are economic engines for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and then if I can get Jacqueline Richardson and Bill Watkins. Yes.
Hi, I'm Annie Gagin. Again, I wanted to commend my councilmember David Rue for opposing SB 827. And thank you again, Mr. Wesson, and the Rules Committee meeting was wonderful. We're very grateful. It is a horrible bill. It will harm and hurt people from every end of the spectrum, for those waiting for Measure JJJ to kick in for affordable housing, to those living in single-family neighborhoods, which the creators of the bill say are a waste of space, which is really nice for people who are raising families in single-family neighborhoods. So thank you so much. We appreciate your work on this, and we hope and pray that the rest of City Council will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Richardson, you're after Mr. Watkins. Come on, Mr. Watkins.
Morning. Bill Watkins here. I'm planning to go to Atlanta to march with the Kings, April 9. Martin Luther King was tragically murdered, of course, 50 years ago, April 4. Looking forward to marching with Reverend Bernice Scott King, Martin's youngest, who was five years old when he was murdered. Very excited about that. Look forward to sharing a report about that with anyone who wants to know, and I hope LA does something over here to March for Humanity, is the name of the march on April 9 that the King Center is doing. I wish everyone well. I might be gone for a few weeks, and I love you guys. And when you're looking at the budget coming up, I hope you really think about public safety and budgeting our code, making sure we're enforcing our law codes. It's going to take a lot of work, and you might have to say it's no to some people we've been saying yes to. Beware of Western medicine, please. We're spending too much money on Western medicine. Just say no and build some roads. I love you guys. Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Richardson?
This is not very nice. For the white Russians, for the white Russians, you should be made to live in this city with the rest of us, with the tangled, messy, horrible traffic we are in every day, every day. If you don't want to put up with this messy, horrible traffic, go home and stay home. Do not come back. Take your holographs with you.
Thank you. If I can get Ms. Ramirez. Okay, Ms. Ramirez, you have one minute for general public comment. Your other items have already been dealt with or the public comment's been satisfied. So you have your one minute. Go ahead.
You have houses of worship and nonprofit agencies that have committed gross human violations against the beloved United States military veterans and legal law-abiding citizens. Case in point, Our Lady of Queen of Angels, or La Placita, located at 535 North Main Street, LA, California, 90012, under head priest Arturo Nevares and then priest Roberto Regosa Beltran and Father Luis Beltran, who have illegally hired two freaking wetbacks named Armando and Edgar and other female social worker wetbacks who are systematically engaged in brute force, physical threats, and innocent homeless people being thrown out without warnings and no assistance to homeless individuals or victims of crimes. They are malicious, they are wicked and vile to all the American individuals while they give preferential treatment to all the goddamn wetbacks and scumbags. Therefore, please, we're asking you, do not donate money, do not donate anything, because they are themselves gobbling it up and it never gets to the military veterans or the victims.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, come start coming forward. And Ms. McAllister, it's my understanding that you, a couple of your cards have already been dealt with, so that leaves you with item one for one minute and then general public comment for another minute. So let's give her her item one right now. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item one, I'm still asking that the 250% penalty fee be lowered to 20% to 25%. Having a 250% penalty fee is called usury, and we shouldn't be putting more people on the street. Many can't afford that. Now also, people, the homeowners who can't fix up their homes or fix those dilations come to City Hall, because there's money in the HHH program for people who are about to lose their homes. They put that money in there because they don't want to see more people in Los Angeles on the street. So that's my concern, and I'm going to keep talking about it because it's very important. And for the city attorney, it's the city attorney who does this. For them to keep doing this, I think it's a crime, and we, as the people, will fight this, because we don't want to see more people on the street. And to you members on the council, do you know why you're not getting any respect? The people, looking at all these people on the street, they're wondering who the darn politicians are. That's why you're getting a lot of flack.
Let's give her her one minute for general public comment.
Like I said yesterday, I worked for law firms, and I know who's doing most of the work, the paralegals. I've been in law firms, I worked them, I know what I'm talking about. For you to give this city, to have over 500 lawyers on this payroll, they have a budget of $124 million, $399 a year. And that doesn't include, every time we come to the meetings, they got something in the agenda about they want to hire some outside attorneys. They have a million five just for consulting attorneys. Now guess where they're getting their money from? The foreclosure registry, foreclosure fund. I was in the meeting when you created that. You're giving them $239,000 out of that. Guess what? The home investment program where we build affordable housing, you're giving them $177,000 out of that. Sidewalk repair, we can't even walk down the street, you're giving them $74,000 from that. Workforce innovation opportunity, $223,000, that's to help people get jobs. These lawyers, this is the biggest scam this city is running with these lawyers. And when I or anyone else become mayor, it's going to be cut from 500 to 25. The White House don't have 500 lawyers.
Thank you. Thank you. So now I'd like to call up Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, you'll get a minute each for item one, item four, and then you'll get a minute for your general public comment. So if you could give him two minutes now, Mr. Clerk, items one and item four. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, Council President Wesson. It's Eric Previn from Studio City in CD2. And disclosure, I'm running for the county supervisor seat in the 3rd District. What a moving presentation today for Noorussi, and there is a feeling of renewal.
On the item, Mr. Previn, on the items, one and four, and general public comment.
Right, no, I get it, sir. You don't have to speak during my time, sir. Though item one, as you know, is the lien item, and today, it is no surprise that it is Marquise Harris Dawson, who has once again topped the list. He has got the highest lien against a constituent. It's at $4,521. But I want to give a special recognition to Mr. Corretts, who managed to squeeze on a small, just above $1,000 lien. We don't see much from him, and that was appreciated. And obviously, Weezer Buscaino doubled up each, which is impressive, and Councilmember Martinez has a decent but reasonably mid-sized lien against her constituents. And in the contest that you were alluding to earlier between USC and UCLA, I would just like to say, go blue. Because Michigan is in the, well, but Michigan is here, sir. All right, fine. I just, we are allowed to shamelessly plug for our schools, sir. That's been just settled, settled law. Let's move forward. Okay, so item, the Lassa thing, I want to call out Meg Barkley, who's done a great job as a homeless coordinator.
Okay, let's give Mr. Previn his one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Well, you're throwing me onto the public comment, hot seat? Fair enough. This morning, sir, during Rules Committee, you identified yourself as Mr. Civic Engagement, and you stood with many activists in Los Angeles against 827, the Weiner density thing, which we appreciate enormously. And I want to thank Andrew Westall for positioning that this morning. But what came up, sir, was you're not actually Mr. Civic Engagement. You're the guy who's trying to get the public out of the process. So we were hoping that in the celebration of renewal and Noorussi, and Corretts is reading the newspaper, but he's listening as well, that you would- he's listening as well, that you would consider maybe trying the six-month proposal, which is to hear from regular constituents, like the many who were sent away. And you could read an article by Joshua and I in the Palisades Post this week. It's a rehash of something that we brought to your attention before, sir, which is that you're turning away your Angelinos. So, that's not civic engagement, to be honest. That's something else. So...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. If I could get Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have items one, four, and general public comment. So, Mr. Clerk, if you give him his two minutes first. Mr. Walsh, items one and four, then general public comment.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Number one is, as you know, building and safety, compliance with code violations. Again, you do a good job on building and safety. We have no complaints. You know, I'm not one of those guys that, "Get up here, and hell, you're all a bunch of crooks. We need white people here. We need all white people." That's not me. As far as number four is concerned, or arguing about what number, "I didn't say number three. I said number four." Number four, these are maps. What they do is they change, they redo the maps, and black peo-, see, they're trying to get black people out of their neighborhood. They're all trying to get black people out of their neighborhood. And I have one black person who's not elected here to say that's not true. They want to get him out so that they can sell his property to white people, this color skin. That's, that's what's happening here. White people are taking over the black neighborhoods. I know it, because I'm white, and I can say it. And I'm protected by my skin from any big problem. I'll give you back your 35 seconds.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
I'm telling you right now, wait a second. Have any of you been out on, to take a look at the cathedral, the church, the cathedral that was built by, by these, it was built, and then it was torn down. It was torn down. There is no cathedral on, in Hollywood anymore. And that was because the mayor wanted that property. And all of these Armenians, they got down on their knees and sucked cock.
Okay, that concludes Mr. Walsh. This, Mr. Herman, you have items one and four. Again, I will state items one and four, and then general public comment.
Well, have we not heard much of the protests regarding the appeals and objection of liens? Is this a pattern and practice of Safe Streets Act? Safe Street Act, ma'am. City Attorney, I'm referring to the liens, how you constantly create a motion of harm and stress and distress upon the public for the so-called interest charges that significantly impact their financial gain. It's your fault, Ms. City Attorney. 42 USC 14141, acts of omission, retaliating against individuals on liens, goddammit!
Get, get back on the subject. Mr. Herman, just stay on the subject.
So, you heard Mr. Previn's comment regarding you, Mr. Dawson. Why can't you have a sanctuary city and forgive and forget the lien?
Stay, stay on the liens.
Why can't we forgive those liens? Look at at 2839 East Cincinnati Street, where I once grew up in Boyle Heights. $1,288.56 fucking cents, putting people like me or homeless more deeper into the, the realm of liens and homelessness. You are really fucked up. That's a pattern and practice, Safe Street Acts, SB 827. Fuck you. Now, my general public comment.
Let's give him his one minute.
This morning, I was denied to speak, but let me read into the record, rookie attorney. The United States alleges and incorporates by reference all the allegations set forth above. Title VI provides that no person in the United States shall on the ground of race, or disability, or my fucking color be excluded from participation in or be denied the benefits subjected to discrimination. Case number 1 slash 17, CV 0099, J for jackass, K for killers, bitch. And I'm talking about Safe Streets Act, 42 USC 1983, the Department of Justice ruled in our favor. We, the people, the American legislative body. So, what the fuck is Price doing, talking about religion, when he has two wives? But I'm sorry, let me politically correct that. He got divorced to one, now he only has one. Thank you, Price.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's vote on items one and four, but let's keep them separate. Let's go item one. Item one, let's...
Mr. President, pardon me, the, the, the items remaining for number one are C, D, and G. That's one C, D, and G.
That's what we're voting on. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's go to four. On item four, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements. Announcements, members, announcements. Now, if we can all rise for adjourning motions, all rise for adjourning motions. If all in the chambers would rise for adjourning motions, I am looking to my right, Mr. Kokorian's side, Mr. Corretts. I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. I am now looking to my left, Mr. Sadiya.
Mr. President, it is with a broken heart.
No, wait, wait a second, Mr. Sadiya. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sadiya.
Mr. President, it is with a broken heart that I stand today to ask that we close in the memory of one of the most extraordinary public servants that I have ever had the privilege and honor of knowing. This morning, Nancy McFadden, the Chief of Staff of the Governor's Office, left us as a product of a battle with ovarian cancer. Those of you who have known her know that she was accomplished in getting things done. She was a mentor to many young people, an avid traveler, a person who could close a big deal one day and then take off hiking on another day. She was born in Wilmington, Delaware, and moved to San Jose with her mother at the age of 11. When her parents separated, she studied political science at San Jose State, later went to the University of Virginia, became an attorney, and was a member of the old Malvina Myers firm. People know that her career began to rise when she became part of the Clinton campaign in 1991 in Little Rock. She was a member of the administration as the Deputy Associate Attorney General, and established herself as the go-to person in the Department of Justice. She became General Counsel for the Department of Transportation, and then the Deputy Chief of Staff for President, Vice President Al Gore. I got to know her later in 2000. She left the Beltway, came to Sacramento. You recall this period of time. There was a manipulation of the energy, and it created a crisis for us in California. Those in Texas thought they could make folly of rules and regulations, and created this energy crisis for us. And we needed someone with a steady hand and a degree of competence that was beyond what was, we were accustomed to. And she came from DC to help Governor Davis during that time period. And she continued to serve as his advisor as we went through that time period. When the governor was recalled, she went into the private sector and became a senior executive with the Pacific Gas and Electric Company. But when Governor Jerry Brown was elected, the governor has a small, loyal, competent leadership team, and he brought Nancy in to, to be the lead of that. She helped him last year during this major gas tax, and also was key in the cap and trade. She's very modest, very loving, very much a fun person, a very positive person. You know, she took the smallest office downstairs in the cap, in the governor's office, and used the other, bigger office as a conference room for the rest of the staff and other people who would come by to visit. Let me tell you this about her personally. You know, I was at a debate, running for the reelection, last year, the year before. And I was in a debate where there was a lot of rancor, and people were very upset and screaming and yelling. And a phone call came in, and I took the call. It was from Nancy. And everybody was upset with me. My team was furious. There's photos of me at this debate. But I took the call, because people were being rude, and they were flipping me off and cursing me. And, and Nancy was on the phone. And she was calling to tell me that the governor had endorsed me. And she was, you know, I've been blessed in public life, having worked on something like the driver's license legislation and the Dream Act. But the blessing is people like Nancy McFadden, who embrace these causes, because they get the work done. And I, I want to say to all the staff that works here, thank you so much for your public service. The 15 of us get a lot of credit, but it's really the staff, and, and our personal staffs and the rest of the staff that make things happen, that turn our ideas into real legislation and real public policy, to try to improve the quality of life for others. And my thoughts of Nancy, I posted this morning, was that there are so many people who are helped, so many people who have their lives improved, who will never know her and never know why their life is better. But it's better because of Nancy McFadden. The governor's been a great governor, but much of his greatnesses comes from the work of Nancy McFadden, bringing that team together, guiding them, moving the legislation, working with the legislators, working with other staff. Someone has to do that work. Someone has to take that idea and make it into a reality. That was Nancy McFadden. I've had other issues. Many of you have asked me to help on issues and on occasion to reach out to Sacramento. And I, I say that, and I say, I'll call the governor's office, I'll call the governor. But I'm not calling the governor. I called Nancy in each and every instance. And each and every instance, she said, you know, "We're gonna get it done. We're gonna get it done for you. We're a team. We're working together. Don't worry. We'll take care of it." She was just, just a wonderful, wonderful human being. She was a person that you just love to call, because of her enthusiasm and her excitement and her, her willingness. I miss her very much. I love this woman. And it's with a broken heart that I ask that we close in her memory. Thank you.
And she was very good, Mr. Sadiya, very, very effective. She knew how to get things done. So, before I recognize you, Mr. Bloomingfield, I do see you. I think that to the city clerk's office, let us put together, I think it's appropriate, the, the type of resolution that can be signed by Mr. Sadiya, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Kokorian, Mr. Price, and myself, since we all had that Sacramento connection. I, I just think that that would be appropriate. So, to the city clerk's office, would you make sure that we create... All members will be on it, but we should sign it. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Well, thank you. I was gonna ask, ask for something to, to be included in this. I mean, I'm just devastated hearing, hearing about, like you, she was my go-to person for, for the governor. And she really was an amazing person. You know, I worked with her particularly, I knew her a little bit in DC, but in Sacramento, we were closing the budget. On the number stuff, we would work with most of the, the budgeteers, so to speak. But when it came to the politics, and we had to really figure out something sensitive and how to work with people in particular issues, I would go to her. And she would help manage that very sensitive aspect of things, and, and just did it so deftly. It's a real loss for, for the state of California, and for all of us. So, may she rest in peace.
Wow. Okay. I'm continuing to look to my left for other adjournings. Again, to the right, members, this meeting's adjourned.
People say they love the job. I really love my job. I've been with Princess Cruises almost 30 years. If you ever spent time with me, you probably come to realize that I live and breathe Princess Cruises. I came to Princess Cruises back in 1989, up the gangway of the Pacific Princess, the Love Boat, which was the most famous cruise ship at the time because of the TV show. Santa Clarita is where our corporate offices are stationed. It's about an hour away from the port of Los Angeles, which we call home. The amount of people that come through on cruise ships, it really is the heartbeat of the West Coast. The job that I do gives guests an experience that they would never normally have on land. My job as manager of Asia and regional programings actually encompasses the world of Princess, truly bringing the destination on board through lots of varieties, from enriching activities, to Broadway caliber shows, to live music. We were the first cruise line to put a huge screen on the top deck, known as Movies Under the Stars. Whether you're five or 105, there is something on board for everybody. I'm very fortunate that my family understand the cruise industry and entertainment. They're involved in it on a daily basis. I'm originally from Liverpool in the United Kingdom. Of course, it's the home of the Beatles, and I knew I wanted to sing from a child. I used to stand on the toilet with a toilet chain, looking up to the light, singing. That was my spotlight. And I've never stopped performing, even behind a desk. "Love exciting and new. Come aboard, we're expecting you. The Love Boat, soon we'll be making another run." Ciao for now.
A farmer over any other farming operation. A significant part of the income is paid at the beginning of the production cycle, not at the end of the production cycle, because people are signing up, if you will, subscribing. The amount of product that's grown, the utilization of that product is much higher, so that gives a better economic return. And there's a commitment by the consumer to the farm. So, all of those things go to help stabilize the economic condition for the grower. And I, I think that's a, a real plus in terms of promoting the idea of CSAs to growers.
The idea that, especially now with what you're hearing about chemicals and what's going into the soil and everything... going into the soil and everything, people wanted to know where their food is being grown. And it's the real, I mean, that's kind of what the whole purpose of CSAs are, is the fact that you know who the farmer is and he knows who he's growing for also.
I like what they do with the land. I know it's really what they say it is, that it tastes good. And we get to try things that we probably, I probably would never have tried or bought if I hadn't, because they're in the package. I cooked them and they only learned to like them. It's just like.
It's not that expensive, actually, because, I mean, you break it out over the course of the year and it comes out to about $16 to $20 a week. And it's a very good bargain, especially for the quality of food that you're getting. Even when you go to the grocery store, organic foods that you get there, a lot of times they still have been shipped and it's been three, four, or five days. This is being harvested yesterday and we're getting it this morning.
I don't like to put product in the CSA share box that has blemishes or whatever. But on the other hand, more important to me is that whatever we put in the box is healthy.
You can say to Steve, I don't like the strawberries this year. What's going on? How are the potatoes? You know, you have a complete dialogue and you can tell him exactly what you'd like him to grow. If enough people want that, he'll grow it for you. And the ranch is always open, so you can watch the methods of cultivation. You can watch how he fertilizes. You can totally trust him. And that's why it works.
And that's a different attitude to have as a farmer, to see myself as contributing to individual health as opposed to simply trying to grow as much as I can of something. It's just a different attitude. This is our late green bean crop, which is coming along pretty good, the last round of green beans for this year. Quimper!
Despite the loss of the Moore Ranch CSA, there are seven CSA farm projects located throughout Southern California. And nationally, CSA farm projects have doubled since 1995, increasing from 500 to 1,006. Having the land to farm, whether on the suburban fringes or in the gut of the city, is the first priority in rethinking how to bring immediate access to food into the community. With the current urban boom, what will the public debate be on how we balance the rational need for more housing and industry with the emotional need to keep a strong connection to our food sources, nature, and an enriching quality of life?
It's not that I'm set on knowing my farmer. It's I'm set on knowing what I'm eating because I wouldn't want some type of pesticide I've never heard of or that has some kind of chemical in it that I wouldn't want to consume in my vegetables.
Communities need to be more self-reliant. We can't be depending upon food coming from Mexico or from Morocco. How do we acquire more food from California? And how do we keep that money local? How do we build that community economic development and recycle those local dollars to support local folks instead of the profits getting siphoned off to the rich?
The kind of global food system that we're moving toward now, you know, is not going to allow us as citizens to have any control over anything. And if you can't control your food supply, I sort of wonder, what can you control?
Whether food should be close, I think it should be close enough to still sort of be flavorful. I'm aware that I eat kiwi from Australia and I can get melons all out of season, but at the same time, when you transport it so far, it often, it sort of has to be engineered to withstand those distances and loses its succulents, loses its fruitfulness. So I'd like to have it as close as possible, but there are real costs involved with that.
We have many great things about our new kind of global agricultural system, if you will, that we get a lot of things from all around the world really quick. And that, in some ways, that's really nice. But in other ways, it may not be so nice because we're losing what we were able to produce locally.
No, 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 no. I think we should keep it close to us, you know. We should, I think people should know this, you know, that they can do their farming, you know. They can have their gardens, they can plant, they can, no, I think it's important.
If we're going to construct a different kind of regional food system, then we have to look at the whole chain of growing, production, distribution, and consumption. And think about how you shorten the distance, how you create a different kind of food product and how you have a different sense of connection to the food system. And each of those are really significant.
I think it should be close to cities because, you know, I guess, you know, if you're close to city, you know, prices, you know, drop down and, you know, you have fresher food instead of all these, you know, other countries, you know.
Food security is not just about control over the source of food. It's also about maintaining cultural identity. It's about putting food back in its rightful place at the center of community.
Of course it is. Yes, it's good. It's nice to have farmers in the community.
Even in California, you know, where is the local food strategy? And how can we make sure that every state in the United States, every city in the United States has an answer to how is its population fed?
We live in a microwave society where everybody wants to put everything in the microwave or go to the fast food chain rather than preparing the food.
Then that also allows you to think about food as the raw food rather than the packaged food components. And thinking about a certain amount of farming and a certain amount of backyard gardening and a certain amount of urban agriculture as a key component. Not everything, but maybe 30% of the food of a city might be grown locally.
Obviously, that would be better for freshness, but if it's also polluted land from a bunch of smog that's drifting by or other kinds of traffic and stuff, I don't think that's a good idea either.
But I think that in the last five or 10 years, there's been this growing sense that we need to somehow restore our relationship to the region, to the bioregion as a source of food and other forms of nourishment.
You know, people hunger for something. I don't know that they know they hunger for this or that, but urban life, industrial life, the consumerist culture is very complicated and in some ways, not very satisfying. And I think that agriculture and horticulture is something that provides a relief, a welcome relief, from whatever it is that's bugging us.
The number of people who are expressing an interest in community-supported agriculture and urban agriculture and other ways to get their food is clear indication that there's something going on.
If agriculture was a certain percentage of forethought in the front of the brain, it's now definitely in the back because that's not what you see. You see more of the, some people call it progress, and it is a certain amount of progress, but that's what you see now. You see housing, you see the tilt-up buildings and stuff like that.
We know there's a crisis of housing as we speak in Los Angeles. Where do you put it? Well, maybe not by stopping every five or six units in one neighborhood, but maybe by saying, let's look at the region comprehensively. Where can we maintain, best maintain open space? Where might there be a possibility to have a significant agricultural land use within the greater Los Angeles or greater Southern California? Where might we reasonably then build at perhaps a higher density in order to meet the housing needs of all the people who are here now and the people who will still come? These are challenging questions. These are really difficult issues, but I think we need to be addressing them all the time and we need to be thinking comprehensively at the regional scale.
The use of the very high-density development, multi-stories, trying to incorporate some open space preservation within the development is a better way to preserve resources. And that would be land resources, energy resources, and water resources.
Well, one of the ways you make housing more attractive is with community gardens or some form of urban agriculture. How do you do that? Those are the kinds of questions that have to be entered into the policy arena right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. We need to look at an inventory of the entire city. And one of the initiatives that I've launched here is something that would kind of democratize the greening of Los Angeles.
And to bring different constituencies together who can relate to the change in that land as a benefit, that's whether it's an environmental benefit or a housing benefit or transportation benefit or a food benefit.
I think it's possible for us to go and look at every underutilized parcel of land and then decide, okay, is this a good place for a library? Is this a good place for a community garden? Is this a good place for a park? And we co-locate those things together. And in doing so, you really would have a park within walking distance of every Angelino, a community garden perhaps within walking distance of every Angelino. And in doing that, I think we not only raise the level of awareness about food and agriculture, but we also then give true security, food security, to all of our communities.
It's not just farmland preservation, which has been the traditional land use question in terms of agricultural production. It has to be also rethinking in the city, the way land is used, to rethink the urban landscape as a whole.
Throughout the vast urban spaces of Los Angeles and cities worldwide, the debate for having agriculture to be part of the city landscape and not separate from it is gaining momentum with the popularity of community gardens, farmers' markets, and CSA farming projects. People are connecting to their food sources and realizing the delicate balance between keeping local farmland productive and the need for urban expansion. Does the promise of the Garden City provoke us to think more about our future than our past?
The vision is more of a local food system where food is being grown in and around urban areas where it's being marketed locally. And also that all people, regardless of their socioeconomic status, have adequate access to nutritionally adequate foods.
I think that it's so important us not to destroy the rest of the farms and the rest of the land, that environment. I hear more and more people talking about that to politicians, to their congressmen, and that it seems that that is one of the topics that they're talking about. But I just don't know how much the politicians actually listen to the people and recognize how important it is to say that.
There are significant issues about the loss of that agricultural production. It's the battleground of the urban fringe. The other component, however, is recapturing urban land for agriculture that's already in developed areas. And that's a new concept. It's not a foreign concept in most parts of the world.
The debate is about how to balance the need for housing, the need for jobs, and also to, at the same time, maintain some of the benefits, some of the reason why people would choose to live here.
The challenges and the solutions, ever-changing, await us in the footprint of the city.
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache with that?
In LA this week.
Have a million-dollar idea but don't have the tools to create it? Well, just beyond these glass doors is access to 3D printers and other cutting-edge technology to help you create the product of your dreams. I'm Gil Reyes at what some people are calling Chatsworth's Best Kept Secret.
New speed limits put the brakes on drivers. We'll tell you where. He may be gone, but his dream of inspiring others lives on. We'll have a story next.
Hello and welcome to LA this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. LA City could soon have a new funding source to battle homelessness, surplus money from the state of California. Gil Reyes breaks down this plan, which has the full support of several California mayors.
This is the time to do it. It's a true partnership. We've got a surplus and never in our history have we seen such a horrible sight, like people living on the streets. Humans have forgotten about other humans.
State Assemblyman Miguel Santiago, among the elected leaders gathering on Skid Row to support Assembly Bill 3171. It would reserve a portion of the state's projected budget surplus for homeless shelters, rental assistance, and affordable housing.
We need more funding for true comprehensive services.
Supporters expecting a state budget surplus of $6.1 billion in the upcoming fiscal year. They want to reserve 1.5 billion of it for homeless programs statewide. And cities would have to match any funds they receive. In the city of Los Angeles, that could translate to as much as $764 million additional dollars to help the unhoused.
We need that local money to go directly to local governments. I know there's some legislation to maybe put that into state agencies, but we can't wait a single day or let red tape stand in the way of one more person getting housed. That's why every single one of the mayors, from north to south, inland to the coast, Republican and Democrats, support this legislation.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, one of 11 California mayors, saying, let's pass this. On Skid Row, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
This would be just one of several strategies LA is using to tackle homelessness. Others include tax measures HHH and linkage fees on developers. The First Lady of Los Angeles is urging compassion as the city comes to grips with LA's homeless crisis. Gil Reyes... Gil Reyes reports on how housing services and a little mercy can turn people's lives around.
I was in a daze, lost and amazed, confused with...
Formerly homeless people and their friends telling stories about loss and then redemption with help from supportive housing.
Having a place to call home has made quite a difference in my life.
We hope that people will take in the stories and see that people can recover.
Philanthropist Marilyn Wells co-hosts the event Stories from the Frontline, ending homelessness through supportive housing, an event partly aimed at opening up people's hearts by embracing homeless housing in their neighborhoods.
We cannot house our homeless neighbors without widespread support.
The mayor's wife, the First Lady of Los Angeles, Amy Elaine Wakeland, mentions what the city has done recently to battle homelessness, like raising the minimum wage, passing measures H and HHH to increase housing and services, and approving linkage fees on developers, which are expected to double the production of affordable housing. But there's more we can do from the heart.
If you know someone who is a landlord, please encourage them to start accepting Section 8 vouchers. That way, we can help get low-income people teetering on the brink of homelessness into a place that they could afford.
LA City Councilman David Ruh also mentions that every council member has pledged to create 222 new units of supportive housing in each district. Another strategy: granny flats. These are secondary units you can add more easily to your house now that the state has eased restrictions. Consider there are more than 500,000 single-family homes in our city. Now, if just 10% added granny flats, that would equal 50,000 new units of housing.
That would house every single homeless person that is currently living on the streets of Los Angeles. No one can do everything, but every single person can do something.
Volunteering with your favorite nonprofit may also help. Find out what else you can do to end homelessness at la mayor dot org slash Days of Compassion. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Local leaders say it'll take several strategies to end the problem. Others in the works include opening up emergency shelters at city-owned lots and attempting to fast-track the building of supportive housing. Well, how safe are Metro rail lines from a terrorist attack? A new device under consideration by the agency may be able to detect concealed weapons without burdening passengers much. Gil Reyes shows us.
No need to panic, but the men in this demonstration are packing something suspicious. We know this because of a new portable system being tested at Seventh Street Metro Station in downtown.
We can literally scan dozens of people in a matter of just a few seconds to determine if there's anything that needs follow-up.
Lori Dankers from TSA introduces us to the Throughvis: two black boxes on wheels with cameras and monitors. They scan without you even noticing.
So someone's entering the system right now on the escalator, and they're going to come into the view of the black box, as we call it. And we are getting the avatar of him right now, and we can see that there is something in his abdomen. There's a black box in that area.
Those black blotches on both men's bellies indicate big changes in body temperature. Worst-case scenario, a suicide vest or other type of explosive device, though that's not always the case. Now, any main blockage of body heat would be detected, and that includes laptops. But instead of pulling over to the side everyone with a laptop, it would be up to an officer's personal discretion, and also, more importantly, bomb-sniffing dogs to detect any main threat.
You know, people have backpacks, purses, like you said, food, you know? That's what we're going to avoid by using the dog. It's kind of our secondary layer. So it's not just one piece of equipment we're relying on. We're relying on the piece of equipment, we're relying on the dog.
Authorities are also always on the lookout for any suspicious behavior at metro stations. Actually, all of us should be too. Other benefits to the devices: there's no radiation exposure, no intrusive X-rays of body parts. Metro passenger Robin Dew likes that it doesn't slow her down on the way to making the train.
You're just walking by, you know, and it's not bothering you, until you're bothering it.
Metro plans on purchasing this or something like it soon. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The fact that it's portable means being able to move the device from station to station. Metro has tested three similar systems since last summer and hopes to have one in place by the end of the year. Well, for some kids in underserved communities, dreams can be lost in the reality of everyday life. But thanks to the legacy of one young artist, more dreams are coming true.
I represent where I'm from to the fullest because for me, it's a place of many abandoned dreams, the good and the bad things.
Jojo Estrada was an artist, a graduate of Cal Arts Acting Program, a community-minded 23-year-old with a promising future. But above all else, he was committed to one very special goal.
Jojo was all about letting young people achieve their dreams. And no matter what background you come from, what economic level, socioeconomic level you come from, that all is possible. He taught them that. He taught the kids in the neighborhood that. He was teaching them that when he passed away.
Jojo was killed in a car accident in 2014, leaving behind his heartbroken parents and sister, but also a legacy. At a recent meeting of the LA City Council, Councilman Jose Uizar honored Jojo's family for finding beauty in tragedy.
We listened to his poem, "Abandoned Dreams," and we said, "That's it. That's going to be our job now."
The same year they lost their son, the Estradas created the Embrase Foundation to honor Jojo, a young man who truly cared about his community and the often-forgotten people on the fringe of society.
Since it began in 2014, the foundation has raised $50,000 for scholarships and arts programs, giving Eastside students the chance to pursue their own dreams.
Jojo just loved life, had a big smile. He always cared about the community. So his poem, "Abandoned Dreams," talks about the dreams in the community being abandoned for different reasons.
It is a poem about the need to take the world, look at the world around you, and truly consider the people you see and to help.
Four years later, Jojo's words still resonate, and they continue to make a difference.
That some can overcome poverty and reach obstacles. Don't allow these dreams to go to waste because the minds of these people can never be replaced.
For more information on the Embrase Foundation and what you can do to help, visit embrase.org. From city services to the latest in mobility, the Abilities Expo offered a one-stop shop for people with disabilities and their families.
Living a full life can be tough for someone with a disability. From getting around the neighborhood to enjoying sports or managing finances, it's not always easy to find the help you need. But thanks to the free Abilities Expo at the Los Angeles Convention Center, there's a one-stop shop to find it all.
It's a variety of products and services and free resources for people with disabilities so that they can find things to make things easier or better or more fun for them and their families.
The expo, now in its 40th year, also featured free workshops and topics ranging from travel to financial planning. The city's Department on Disability was also on hand to help people connect with local resources.
What we're trying to make sure is that folks know that we are available to them. We are very focused on ensuring that all city services, facilities, programs are accessible. And so we'd like to make sure that folks have the opportunity to let us know, one, what needs to be fixed, if anything, and really just hear for the community.
There are plenty of options to help people get around, from service dogs to motorcycles to a wide selection of accessible vehicles, and even a state-of-the-art exoskeleton, offering a new degree of increased mobility. The expo proved to be a hit with visitors.
Oh, I like it a lot. It's very nice.
Everything's going really well. I enjoy myself very much.
For information on all the services the city offers, visit disability.lacity.org. Residents in downtown City West neighborhood usually have to travel blocks to get to the nearest grocery store, but not anymore. This market's so close to home, in fact, for some tenants, it's in the building. Gil Reyes reports on this new alternative for downtowners living west of the 110.
People in the City West section of downtown shop in the neighborhood's first and only full-fledged market, Grocery Outlet. It's located on the ground floor of the Sofia Los Angeles Apartments on Sixth and Bixil.
I live just up the street, and I wanted a local grocery store, so it's my first time here, and I like it a lot.
He likes the prices, too. As the sign says, a bottle of organic ocean spray cranapple drink is just $2 here, around $4 elsewhere.
The prices were just right. I love it.
Our shoppers in our community can expect 40% to 70% savings on brand-name items.
Carlos Torres owns City West's Grocery Outlet. All outlets are independently owned, and while the food here is consistent, the brand names they carry often vary from week to week. So get your favorite brands while they last. Torres says buying bulk from distributors is one way he gets bargains.
We are able to extend those deals and those savings to our customers.
A new place to shop for me. I actually live in the neighborhood now. City West's Councilman Gilbert Sadio says all 30-plus employees here at the market are also from the neighborhood. He worked with the market, as well as the nonprofit Central City Neighborhood Partners to help ensure local hires.
That's huge. It's a way of getting integrated into the community. It means so much to the people who got hired.
Ask Alicia Presley. She says she applied through the city's WorkSource Job Centers, was interviewed at City Hall, and hired on the spot. Today, she works cashier.
I like it a lot. I love introducing myself to the people. It's great prices, so it kicks up a best conversation ever. People can't believe the prices.
I'm looking forward to it because I live nearby, and it's going to be a convenience for me.
Even closer for residents of the Sofia, who could shop here without ever really leaving home. From downtown City West neighborhood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Parking in the area can be scarce, but there are 30 free 90-minute garage spaces available. If you've ever felt you're taking your life into your hands trying to cross some LA City streets, you're not alone. The city is taking steps to make sure your next step isn't your last.
The statistics are devastating.
I think most people don't realize that we have more people who are killed from traffic fatalities than we have gang homicides. And almost as many people die from traffic fatalities as all the homicides in LA in a given year.
With pedestrian deaths surging across the city, Mayor Eric Garcetti announced a new initiative to slow motorists down and educate Angelinos about their responsibility in keeping our streets safe.
26 streets where speed limits have been adjusted, up, increased; 45 streets where the speed limits have been lowered; and a number of the rest of the balance are all staying the same.
The new speed limits are the result of a citywide survey of streets where deaths and serious injuries are more likely to take place. City officials also corrected a major problem that made enforcement of existing speed limits a challenge. The state mandates that a street's speed limit must be certified on a regular basis, but many of these certifications had expired.
Which made it impossible for LAPD to enforce the speed limit using radar or laser on too many of our streets.
By the end of the year, officials say most of the streets will be certified and their speed limits enforced. Councilmember Mike Bonin says the city should do everything it can to make everyone safe.
The leading cause of death in Los Angeles County of children under the age of 14 should not be traffic collisions. Our most vulnerable: pedestrians, seniors, people with disabilities, people from lower-income communities, people who are undocumented, should not be at such risk as they are right now.
The focus on enforcement is just part of a larger initiative called Vision Zero, which aims to eliminate traffic deaths in Los Angeles by the year 2025.
The Vision Zero Action Plan from the Department of Transportation, which talks about the rest of the ease. It talks about the steps we need to take in education, the steps we need to take in engineering to make sure that every street is safe for everyone trying to get across Los Angeles and for every kid trying to get to school.
We have a pedestrian pledge, which we have our children take. We have a driver's pledge, which we have our drivers take. And it's just that whole focus on education, and then the enforcement efforts, and then embracing the new engineering aspects.
With the help of some young Angelinos, the mayor and councilman Bonin left Angelinos with some common sense advice.
Slow down!
All right.
To find out more about Vision Zero and how you can do your part as a driver or pedestrian, check out visionzero.lacity.org. Do you have the next billion-dollar invention? Well, the newly established Chatsworth Northridge Industrial Core aims to bring some bold ideas to life with community fun and learning in mind. Gil Reyes has more from Chatsworth. Gil.
Yes, Yana, just beyond these glass doors is what LA City Councilmember Mitchell Englander calls the best-kept secret in the entire San Fernando Valley, a tinkerer's paradise where product dreams can come true. Nuna Karagian, a retired teacher, is designing a product that she says could improve the solar industry. We can't show you the idea yet. For now, it's a secret.
But I think it's waiting for me to just do it.
And you're making it here.
I'm making it here.
We are at Hex Lab Makerspace, located in an unassuming industrial park in Chatsworth. Here, professional and amateur tinkerers make prototypes of robotic hands, wooden toys, basically anything they dare to imagine. Now, some of these creations are just for fun. Others are intended for the mass market someday. Helping to make dreams come true is a treasure trove of accessible laser cutters, 3D printers, and other cutting-edge technology at Hex Lab. The space was founded by Mike Hexter, a product designer with a lot of extra equipment.
So when the machines were just sitting there not being used, it killed me. So I wanted to open up the doors to the public and inviting the community to learn how to use the machines.
For $110 a month, you have access to all the machines. Hex Lab offers discounted memberships for seniors and teens, also classes for beginners.
So this is an example of a product that somebody designed and developed here without any prior experience. So we have a welder who came in, and they wanted to learn how to use the laser-cutting machines, as well as electronics to control the LED lights and change all the colors. So they started with a simple two-hour class. They did a second two-hour class, and when they were done, they started making.
They bring in people of all ages, from schoolchildren that take field trips. You could have a membership here and come regularly.
Chatsworth's councilman Mitchell Englander and I take a tour of Hex Lab. It's actually part of the much larger Toolbox LA innovation hub, home to several other hardware startups working together to help ensure product success.
The entrepreneurship hub of the valley. It's meant to inspire and engage. So in the building, we have MakingLA, which is a hardware accelerator. They invest in people's products. And then upstairs, we have Toolbox LA, a huge coworking facility. There are conference rooms for businesses to use, offices, desks. They can rent them for a day or for a month. It's a great platform for businesses to be launched from. We have a 200-person event space. And over here is one of the artists-in-residence projects. This was a plain old-school bus, and we stripped down all the paint, sanded it down, and an artist has come in and drawn and created a masterpiece.
This party bus was refurbished with the help of woodworking tools at Hex Lab, and inside, a DJ booth. For birthday parties, corporate events, the sky's the limit.
The whole idea is not just to be a creative space, but a gathering space, to have fun, to have different types of events. It's certainly programmable, so you can make learning fun.
Councilman Englander says Toolbox LA and Hex Lab fit right into his Inov 818 master plan, reserving roughly three square miles of Chatsworth and Northridge as an ultra-modern industrial core.
To market this area to businesses, to bring them here, to show them what we have, and then be able to program all the other companies and the nonprofits around it, and who's here, like Hex Lab, that they have this in their backyard, they can home-grow a future workforce. We can protect this area in perpetuity and then just grow it from what it already is. It's a magical place.
A place where you're only limited by your imagination.
Here, if you can dream it, you can build it.
Reporting from the new Chatsworth Northridge Industrial Core, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Bring your idea to life? Find out more at hexlabmakerspace.com. A plan to house people who are homeless in shelters at El Pueblo moves forward. A new plaque commemorates the historic LA student walkouts five decades ago, and the Asian community marks the end of the Chinese New Year. All these stories in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council approved Councilmember Jose Uizar's motion to provide five trailers for temporary shelter, restroom and showers, as well as case management space to assist those experiencing homelessness at a city-owned parking lot near El Pueblo in downtown Los Angeles.
Three, two, one!
Community members joined Wilson High School Alumni Association to unveil a bronze plaque sponsored by Councilmember Jose Uizar and other partners to commemorate the 50th anniversary of Chicano student walkouts at El Serino Middle School, the site of the original Wilson High School, where students were the first to walk out of classes on March 1, 1968. They were protesting poor education and prejudicial policies against Mexican-American students.
The school had a tier system, a tracking system, in which most of the Mexican-American and Chicano students were being placed in shop classes and in home economics classes instead of college preparatory classes. And so we weren't getting the education that we were entitled to, that we deserved. And so it was important for us to demonstrate that we were going to protest this, we weren't going to stand for it, we were going to do something about it.
Chinese Americans and other community members came out for the 17th Annual Los Angeles Lantern Festival. The event occurs The event occurs annually on the 15th day of the first lunar month to mark the closing of Chinese New Year festivities. The Lantern Festival embraces the mission of the Chinese-American Museum to foster a deeper understanding and appreciation of America's diverse heritage.
And it's about learning about each other, where we dispel fears, and we build friendships and love. And we want to come together as a city, we want to come together as Angelenos, we want to come together as Los Angeles, because in Los Angeles, we celebrate diversity.
Each year, Chinatown plays host to one of the city's most colorful celebrations, maintaining a tradition that's been going strong for 119 years. The Lunar New Year is one of the most festive holidays for the Southland's 1.5 million Asian-Americans, and the heart of that celebration is right here in Chinatown. Welcome to the Golden Dragon Parade.
We have the best Los Angeles weather. Of course, it always shines brightest here in the first district.
This year's parade featured dragons, of course, but also celebrated the Year of the Dog, a symbol of loyalty, honesty, and friendship.
I was born on the Year of the Dog, too, which is pretty cool, so it's just a lot of fun.
I love the atmosphere, I love the celebration, the confetti, and all the kids shooting off the confetti.
I like the dragon.
Happy New Year, everybody!
Past grand marshals of the Golden Dragon Parade have featured celebrities, including Bruce Lee and David Carradine. While looking for a new haircut, why not cut it all off for a good cause? Waffle Mania hits downtown L.A. and check out the work of some local artists. All this and this week's Things to Do. Come out and help raise money at the annual LAFD/LAPD St. Baldric's fundraiser to fight kids' cancer. Participants will be shaving heads in order to raise awareness and funds for childhood cancer research. The family-friendly event features a free breakfast, magicians, caricature, and balloon artists, face painters, fire and police apparatus displays, a silent auction, and prizes and toys for the kids. And all of the entertainment is free. It all takes place Saturday, March 24, from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at LAFD Fire Station 89, located at 7063 Laurel Canyon Boulevard. If you love waffles, then you won't want to miss Waffle Day, celebrated on March 25 every year, per the Swedish tradition. Organizers are bringing the fun, food, and good times to downtown L.A. Enjoy beverages, live music, and all the best waffles in L.A., from savory to sweet. Festival takes place on March 24 and 25 at Pershing Square. For more, visit wafflesandbeerfest.com. In the heart of Lamont Park thrives a group of community business members with a passion to develop an event rooted in the foundations of culture, art, music, and community. On the last Sunday of the month, Lamont Park Village invites the public over to enjoy a day filled with art exhibits, music, fashion, food, drumming, and other creative endeavors for the whole family. Plenty of DJs spinning, rymers rappin', and poets of the spoken word combined with traditional artists and the legendary drum circle. Don't miss the fun on Sunday, March 25 at Lamont Park Village. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Hello and welcome to another episode of Adopt a Pet Today, sponsored by the Pet Care Foundation. And today, we are at the South L.A. Animal Shelter, which is on 60th Street, near the corner of Western. But if that's not a convenient location for you, there are five other L.A. City shelters. You can find all locations at laanimalservices.com. That's laanimalservices.com. Now, we're going to show you some wonderful cats and dogs, one that I'm sure will be perfect for you. But if you don't see the one that's perfect for you, you can also go to that website, laanimalservices.com, and see every single animal that they have at all six L.A. City shelters. Now, we also have Raina Barker, our resident dog trainer, with dog training tips and care tips that I'm sure you'll want to hear. So let's go see some great dogs and cats, one just for you.
And here we are at South L.A., and here's our first guest. Who is this?
This is Morgan, and he's a very handsome guy, as you can tell. He's about eight years old. He's great on a leash, he loves to play fetch.
Is that the spot?
Yeah, that's the spot. And he's been at the shelter for a little while, but he's people-friendly, he's dog-friendly, he's great on a leash, loves to play catch. So he is a little bit older, not old, but a little bit older, which is not stopping anything, because he still has a whole lot of energy, loves to run and play.
And the older, you know, physically, he's in great shape, he has a lot of energy, he's very engaging, loves dogs and people. You couldn't ask for a better companion in your home. This would be an awesome dog to adopt and give him that home forever. And do you have his A-number at all available?
Yes, it is A1739899.
That's perfect. I love these older guys. And he is, like we said, he is still energetic and happy and healthy and ready to find his forever home. This is Daisy Girl. Come here, love. Turn around. Good girl. Yay! And Daisy came in a little timid and a little nervous, but she's sweet. You say she's really a good girl.
She's a very good girl. She loves people. She's very affectionate. She loves belly rubs. She's very, very, very sweet and just loves everybody. She loves the volunteers, the volunteers love her. She's actually about eight years old, and she just loves everybody. And her behavior is very, very submissive, very sweet, just a gentle soul. She's just very sweet.
And I love that personality, too, because you just have one, and you just have to realize, you know, she's a little more shy and timid. Take your time with introducing her to new things. And she probably does just fine, you know, not all of us are outgoing and, you know...
And she's pretty mellow, she'd love to just hang out and just enjoy the summertime in a new home.
Perfect.
Her A-number is A1693622.
Daisy Mae. Hello, Amelia! How old is she and what's her A-number?
Okay, well, this is Camelia, and, yes, and she's about nine years old. Her A-number is A1744265. And she's a sweet senior girl. She's very, very, very friendly. She likes other dogs, she's hung out with some other dogs, and she's just a sweet little girl that needs a new home. She has a little bit of cataracts in her eye, but otherwise, she's great. She loves to play, loves to be handled, and just loves people. She's a great girl, but she is already spayed, and she's vaccinated, and she's ready to go home with somebody today.
Good. What a sweetheart. She's a little underweight. The coughing here, again, is pressure, you know, from the leash. Yeah, so that always makes me feel bad, because then she's probably been, you know, handled a little roughly around her neck in the past, but that doesn't, and look how good she is.
And she's got a beautiful coloring. I love her colors. This little beauty is Jessie, very sweet little girl. Her ID number is A1752008, and she's about five years old. She's very sweet, she loves to play, she loves people. She was an owner surrender. She came into the shelter with a little mass on her neck. We were able to get some fluid out of there, which is a good thing, but she's in good spirits, and like I said, she does love people, very playful, and she's just a beautiful girl. She is a gender mix, and she's been at the shelter for a little while, so we want to make sure that she gets a home, because she's definitely a love bug that just needs some TLC.
And they come when they get adopted, they're spayed or neutered?
Yes, she is already spayed and vaccinated and microchipped and just ready to go home to a new family.
Yep. Let's talk about Moses.
Okay, Moses is definitely a beautiful, gorgeous boy. He is an American staff mix. He is a beautiful brindle color, which is awesome. He is here at the South L.A. Shelter. His A-number is A1753067, and he is a sweet, gentle big boy.
How old?
He is about, let's see here, about eight years old as well. He's been in the shelter for about two months, and he came in kind of injured with some wounds to his chest, but he does need a good, loving, warm, you know, warm home, especially for this colder weather. He can definitely cuddle with somebody, but he's a big boy that just has a whole lot of TLC. He can give and is more than likely to welcome it all.
Awesome! And he's... And is he good in the yard?
We don't have a whole bunch of background on him as far as his personality at, you know, at a home, but here is a little stressful for them, so they totally do give you a different personality once they get into a new home.
But definitely engaging and definitely people-dog. Oh, who is this girl?
This is Hope. Hope is a nine-year-old German Shepherd, super sweet, very, very smart, loves to play cat. She was actually out in the yard playing cat. She's a sweet girl.
I know it. Where are we?
She came in actually with a little heart murmur, but we have no signs of that heart murmur anymore, which is great.
And that can be treated easily.
But she loves to play. Loves to play and is, doesn't seem to pay any attention to any of the other dogs, which is always good, but just has energy and is definitely going to need a yard.
Yep.
And some good walks, play ball, all that good stuff. But she's a very... Her name is Hope.
Her A-number, though, sweetie?
Is A1746079.
Come here.
And she actually is dog-friendly. We've been able to have her in the yard with some other dogs. This handsome boy is Pitt.
What is it?
Pitt.
Pitt?
That's the name.
P.I.T.
P.I.T. And he's a very sweet boy. He's about eight years old as well. He was an owner surrender, but according to his previous owners, they said he's very, very good with people, he's very, very sweet. He's also very gentle with treats, which is great for training purposes. Very gentle. He doesn't seem to bother, you know, or be bothered by other dogs, which is also great. He knows how to sit, so he knows some of his commands, and some of those commands he's learned here at the shelter with volunteers. But he's already neutered, and his A-number is A1722114. Otherwise, he's just a sweet boy that just needs to get home and is just very loving, and again, very gentle with treats, and is, does know some of his commands, which, again, I mentioned, is very, very good, smart boy.
How long has he been here?
He's been at the shelter here, oh my goodness, for quite a few months, for I think it's been about seven months now.
Everest! Look at him, he's so handsome! He's a bit, how much does he weigh? My goodness!
He's a big boy, definitely a big boy, but this is Everest, and his A-number is And he is a big boy that loves to play fetch, he loves to play with the ball, he loves treats. He's a volunteer favorite here at the South L.A. Shelter. He's been here for about 11 months, and we would like for him to go to a family where he's the only dog. But he's fine, he's great, he's very smart, and he loves, like I said, to play out in the yard, loves to play ball, and he just needs a family to give him a new chance and give him a welcoming home so that he can get all the TLC as possible.
He's a big boy, he's strong. Get some training on him, and, but he's already a people dog, so...
And he's already neutered, too, neutered and vaccinated and microchipped, ready to go home. This is Samantha, and her A-number is A1753365. And she's about a four-year-old German Shepherd girl who came into the shelter with an injury on her leg. She actually had a broken leg that the bone was exposed, so we did have to amputate her leg, so she does have, her right front leg has been amputated, but she's very, very sweet. She's very lovable, a little shy. However, they did bring Morgan out to hang out with her. Morgan is one of the first dogs that we did show today, and she perked right up when she seen him.
Oh, awesome.
And she just totally felt comfortable with him, and she's doing really well. That leg really isn't stopping too much of anything, and she just, she wants to cling on to you, she thinks she's a lap dog, super sweet, super lovable, here at the South L.A. Shelter, and she's already spayed, vaccinated, microchipped, the works, just ready to go home with somebody who's going to give her all the TLC she deserves.
And it would be good, then, for her to have a dog companion in the home to help build her confidence and trust, and when their dog, I have a dog like that I'm fostering, who is so dog-friendly, and he just needs that companionship.
This is Dog, and he is a two-year-old male with, again, beautiful coloring, big boy, and he came into the shelter as an owner surrender, and he is very sweet and loved by volunteers. He loves to lay out in the sun and sunbathe, and he loves treats. He's already vaccinated, microchipped. He will need to get neutered, which we'll probably have done sometime this week, but he's a great boy. He's just been at the shelter for quite a while and really needs to get a new home.
Oh, you need a home. Come see this gorgeous boy. I love his coloring. It's a beautiful color, it's like this reddish fawn color. It's so pretty. You're a pretty boy.
Yes, his A-number is 1729398. Sorry about that. I repeated, A1729398. This is Wallace, and Wallace is definitely a big boy. Wallace's A-number is A1744903, and he is a white American Bulldog, and he is already neutered, microchipped, vaccinated, and the works. He actually, he's been at the shelter for a little while. He's energetic, strong, he's actually really goofy, and he would love to...
Big puppy, like a big...
Big old love bug, right? And he loves long walks. He is, we recommend that he be the only dog in the home. He doesn't really like to share his food too much, but these are all things that we can definitely overcome. But he is great with people, and the volunteers do love him. And again, he likes long walks, and he loves to be out in the yard, so he's just looking for a new home.
So we just saw some beautiful dogs.
We did.
Really sweet, sweet dogs.
Bless our hearts, absolutely.
Speaking of dogs, I have three big dogs and five cats.
Yes, you do.
And I'm moving.
Yes, I know.
So tell me how I should move them.
Well, there's, first of all, we'll talk about dogs and the cats kind of separately, but overall, whenever you do make a move with an animal, the main goal is to keep them safe and help them feel safe, right? It's a big transition. It's like us, sometimes we're excited and sometimes we're nervous, and they can feed into that, you know, anxiety or stress that we have, or our joy, depending upon how we project it. So also just keeping them safe and secure and... So also just keeping them safe and secure and, and having them understand this is a good thing. Don't worry, I'm here for you. Okay, now how do we go about doing that? With a dog, um, dogs are a little bit more adventuresome than a cat. So for them, sometimes depending upon our attitude, it's gonna be, oh, this is kind of fun. We get to go and see a new place, smell and check it out and sniff and hang out and market and all that. So I do suggest to have people take their dogs to their new neighborhood and visit it a couple of times before the move. Let them smell and get used to the little neighborhood. And, and if you can, then ultimately go into the house and the yard before you actually make the big move and let them check it out. And I did that when I moved years ago. Several times I brought my dogs to my new house and it was an adventure. It was fun. So we'd play in the backyard and get them to hang out in the house. And that was before all the move, okay? So it helps them, hey, have some familiarity before you get there, okay? Every animal is different. Every animal's going to acclimate differently. Some are gonna be more stressed than others, no matter what you do. And some are gonna be just fine. It just depends upon your dog and your relationship and what you do, okay? And how they are and how sensitive you are to their individual needs. Somebody with one dog, you know, that's a little easier than you with so multiple animals. And, but those, uh, relationships that your dogs have help each other as well, I think. You know, I think they're, oh, he's okay, so I'll be okay. So make it an adventure, make it fun for them and take them there, okay? Also, don't make a bunch of changes in, with their beds and get them new things and new bowls. Keep the same, you're right, because you want that smell, you know, to, to go with. You can add and make new things later, once they've settled in. But, you know, make sure the yard is secure. Don't, don't leave them alone in the yard unsupervised right away because that's an unfamiliar yard. Um, they may panic if you're gone and suddenly I have that happen a lot with clients. Oh my God, I just got this dog. He loves the yard, but I went to work and he escaped. Sure, he doesn't know where you are. He doesn't know the house very well or the yard very well yet. If you need to leave, hook up with a good dog walker or pet sitter or something who can check on your animals and be there or a friend who can be there for them. I also suggest on the day you move perhaps, you're gonna be busy with movers and settling things. Have somebody you know be their companion that day.
Yeah.
Hang out with them, you know, in the yard even. You know, you don't want to isolate them. You don't want to abandon them and have them worry where you went and what's going on because they're gonna know things are changing.
Do you want to be that companion?
Sure, sure, I'll do it. I'd love it. Um, that would be fun.
Okay.
Um, now those are dogs, you know, and that's, that's just tip of the iceberg. That's, you know, we're limited time here. I could go on, you know? But with the cats, as I said, cats are a little different. Cats are like change, no way, change, I don't like change, you know? And they have, you know, they have issues with that. So with cats, I, of course transporting them, I don't know how you think about transporting. In a carrier, they carrier trained. Not so much. I know many cats are like, no, I don't want to go in that carrier either. So if you have time now, um, and they're not carrier trained, you know, the box carriers that the vets use or, you know, get some of those. You know how cats love to jump in boxes and go in bags and that sort of thing? Set them out, let them jump in boxes, throw catnip in there and cat treats and let them explore in the boxes and get used to going in and out of them with food and whatever good things, so that when you do put them in there, it's maybe not quite as traumatic. You know, give it a week or so, whatever time you have. And transport them obviously in a carrier that's safe. If you have a regular carrier, you're taking like a crate, then you need to do the same thing. Leave the crates out.
You could do that, put treats in it.
Treats in there, catnip, you know, let them go in and out with the door open right now. Let them, feed them in there if you can. So those are fun. Um, once you move and you transport them though, they do not have run of the house. Obviously you can't anyway with the dogs. But anybody who just has a cat by itself or two cats, you just give them a room. You know this, you've done it. You do not want to let them have the whole house. It's a room, whether it be a bathroom or one room that they're just gonna hang out in and become familiar with, right? Yeah, at first, absolutely. You can expand once they've settled in. They're gonna try and hide. They may want to climb high and, you know, get away from all the chaos. So make those available for them, a place to hide, a place to climb, things like that. You know, you've got, you're a cat person, you've got it.
I'm a cat and dog person.
And dog person you are, I know you are, I know you are. But that's it.
That's good advice, thank you.
Well, you're welcome and I'd love to help you out. Okay?
Okay, all right. Okay, here we go. This is Sophie and tell us Sophie's A number, Arlene.
Sophie's A number is 1762627. She is a beautiful girl. Look at that. She's about four years old, very, very sweet. She's a brown tabby and white. And she actually came in with Winston, who we'll introduce you in just a second. Um, she is a female spade, already vaccinated, microchipped, the works. She's been here for a little while and she's going right next door. She's very curious, as you can tell. Um, but she's just looking for a new home. And again, she came in with this other cat that we're gonna introduce to you, but she's super sweet and lovable. Look at that.
Did we get her A number? I can't remember.
It's A1762627. Oh, look at that.
She has a great partner, Winston, who we're gonna show you right now. And if you, it's always good to have two cats because they keep each other company, right? This is Winston that we were talking about before. Sophie's brother.
And his A number is A1762629. And he is gorgeous. He's a great tabby. And he was an owner surrender with his sister. Beautiful boy, look at that. Very affectionate, beautiful coloring, already neutered, microchipped, vaccinated, the works. And again, like you said, if you take them both home, they just entertain each other.
Right.
And, but he is gorgeous, very big cat and just lovable. Look at that.
They're both really lovable cats.
Yes, not shy at all, which is great, especially for the shelters. So as long as they have each other, they'll keep each other busy. Beautiful. Her name is Samantha. And Samantha's a sweet girl. She's about three years old. She's already spayed. She's, uh, vaccinated, she's microchipped. She is, uh, here at the South LA Shelter. Her A number is A1762747. And she's also got some beautiful coloring. She's a torty, um, just looking for a new home. She will be available on the 16th of March. So just come on into the shelter and give her a new home. She's very, you know, to herself and quiet. I'm sure she's a little nervous about being here, but she definitely, um, just needs a new home. And like I said, she's very young, about three years old. So just come on in and take her home.
She'd probably love to curl up in your lap and, and sleep and watch TV and read with you, right?
Right, and I love the coloring too.
Here we have a gorgeous Siamese, love those big blue eyes.
Beautiful, beautiful boy. Okay, his name is Benjamin. And Benjamin, uh, his A number is 1761502. And again, he is a male and he's a Siamese seal point mix, about three years old. Um, he's, hasn't been neutered, but he will be before he gets home. Uh, also vaccinated, microchipped, the works. Of course, as you can see, the beautiful coloring and the beautiful eyes. He's very, very, very curious. As you can tell, he's starting to come out and warm up a little bit. Um, but he's a beautiful cat and would be, you know, really good in a home with a family that's gonna, you know, give him the TLC. Because again, being here at the shelter, it makes them a little nervous. I can understand that, so.
He would show some personality once he got used to you.
Oh yes, definitely. Once you take them home and, uh, get, like I said, make them a little more comfortable. It's not so scary because sometimes just being in a new environment, especially with cats, they get a little nervous, so.
So he may need somebody that's got some cat experience.
Yes, to take him home and just kind of bring him around so his, he can really show his little personality.
Okay, so our next beautiful kitty cat is named Charlene.
Yes, Charlene is a gorgeous brown tabby. She's two years old. Um, she was brought in as a stray, so we do need to make sure that she gets spayed before she goes home, which will definitely be taken care of. She's vaccinated, she will be microchipped. Um, she's been at the shelter here for, um, about just a few days and she's actually available as of, uh, tomorrow. So she's just looking for a new home, like I said, very beautiful brown tabby, um, that will definitely adjust once you take her home. Because again, it's a little nervous being here. I know I would definitely be a little nervous, but...
And plus there's a light and a camera sticking in her face.
Of course, of course. But she just needs a home that's gonna give her, you know, the TLC that she needs. But she's very young, like I said, two years old, that will definitely adjust once you take her home into your, your family.
Again, with this cat, somebody that's got some cat experience to help her feel secure and safe. And then she'd come out and be a loving kitty, I'm sure.
Definitely. It just takes a little while for them to adjust and then eventually they come around. But she's a sweet girl and she, again, beautiful coloring, just like the rest of the cats that we showed today.
Okay, so now we have Chrissy, another beautiful kitty.
Okay, now this is Chrissy. She is beautiful, a little nervous as well. She's a gray tabby and her A number is 1761276. She's probably like, why is...
Get that camera out of my face.
Right? Um, she's about one and a half years old. And again, her number is A1761276. Beautiful gray tabby. She was brought in, um, as a possible owner, but they didn't come in to redeem her. So she's looking for a new family. Um, that probably explains a little bit of the hissing. She's like, where's my family at? So she's looking to go home with somebody. Um, she's available on the 15th. And again, she will be, uh, spayed before going home. She's already vaccinated. She will be microchipped and is ready to go to a new loving family.
And again, with this one, somebody with some cat experience would probably be better.
Definitely, just to give her a little time and allow her to eventually, you know, show her personality and warm up. Because she did previously own this, belonged to somebody, but then we didn't have any luck getting ahold of them. So she just, I'm sure is a little, you know, about wondering what's going on and why am I here? So she just needs a new family.
All right, Arlene, this one is, you're gonna name her Winter. God, she's gorgeous.
Beautiful, look at that. Look at those eyes. She is a gorgeous one-year-old, uh, spade female here at the, uh, South LA Shelter. Her A number is A1762269. Again, she's only a year old. So she does have her vaccines. She's also spayed, microchipped, ready to go home with a new family as of the 14th.
Getting up to say hello. She's, I'm gonna go in here and get away from this light.
What are all these people doing here in front of me? So she's definitely a sweetheart, just relaxing. Because again, she just got spayed, so she's just kind of taking it slow. But she is a gorgeous girl, just looking for a new home.
Now we have a, a tuxedo kitty, black and white, named Mauricio.
Yes, very fancy, right? He is a four-year-old black and white tuxedo cat here at the, uh, South LA Shelter. His A number is 1759434. And he's about four years old. Look at that, he's just rolling over. Very sweet boy, looking for a new family to give him some TLC. Again, he is a male and he will be, uh, neutered and he will be completely vaccinated, microchipped, ready to go home with his new family. He's been here for about a couple of weeks now and so he just needs somebody to give him some TLC. He did come in with an injury to his tail, so we did amputate that. Otherwise, he's just doing great and he is definitely lovable. Look at that, very sweet boy. As soon as he went in there into the cage, he just kind of flopped over. So that's always a good sign, especially with cats.
So now we're in the rabbit room and there's lots of bunnies available and they're awfully cute. Tell us about caring for rabbits, Arlene.
Oh my goodness, so one of the most important things that we want to make sure that we do whenever we, um, take home a new rabbit is we gotta make sure that they're spayed and neutered. Very important. People don't realize that they have to spay and neuter their rabbits, but they will multiply very quickly, which is why we usually have so many come into the shelter. Um, unfortunately, they're not always the quickest to get adopted, but we do want to make sure that people understand we have lots of rabbits in the shelters that are available for adoption. The fees do include them getting spayed and neutered, which is a great thing. So we don't have to worry about them going home and reproducing or producing more babies. But, um, we, you know, we do have volunteers that come into the shelter. They do exercise our volunteer, I mean, our rabbits, I'm sorry, um, regularly, which is great. Um, as you can tell, we have hay inside of their, um, their cages here. We have pellets, we have food. And again, um, we want to make sure that people do understand that we do have, you know, rabbits. We have just about everything in the shelter. So it's not just cats and dogs. Um, and so if you're looking for a new rabbit, please visit your local shelter. We have six in the city of Los Angeles. And again, we do try to get them homes, you know, as quickly as possible because they do stay here for just, you know, a little longer than, than some of the others. But we want to make sure we get them new homes as well.
And, um, I've heard that rabbits can be litter box trained, is that true?
Yes, all of ours here are. So that's one of the things that you do see. We see, have litter, uh, boxes in all of our cages. So they do get litter trained when they're here in the shelter, which is...
Do they use kitty litter or do they use hay?
Actually, they like to eat the hay. Well, they go and handle their business, which is kind of funny, but they do. We also, like I said, have pellets for them, but they will go on the litter boxes. They will eat the hay and they will go to the potty.
And rabbits are very affectionate too, aren't they?
Very affectionate, very, very sweet. Um, again, a lot of times people come in and they want to adopt a rabbit. They usually have some sort of experience with rabbits. Um, but, but like I said, the most important thing is that if you have a rabbit at home, that they're spayed and neutered. Again, if you adopt from the shelters, all of them are spayed and neutered prior to going home with their new families. But they're lovable, sweet pets that just, again, need new homes.
So that's our show. Thanks so much for watching. I really hope you found a dog or a cat that you want to rush on down to the South LA Shelter and adopt. But if you didn't, please go to laanimalservices.com. You can see all of the animals that they have at all six LA City shelters on that website. And remember, you gotta spay and neuter your animals. It's the best way to keep them safe, healthy, at home with you, and it is the law in Los Angeles. Thanks again for watching. See you next time on Adopt a Pet Today.
Hi, my name's Louis and I'm at Pan Pacific Park and you're watching LA City View 35. It's our city, it's our channel.
Our best accomplishment would be probably wanting to play the trumpet.
It was amazing. We loved it, it was beautiful.
It was awesome.
Oh, it was fantastic. It was really amazing. I got a little teary-eyed.
That's beautiful.
Uteau is great, wonderful. I can't say anymore, no, excellent.
Oh, it was great, it was fantastic.
I love it. I enjoyed it so much.
I love the concert, it was amazing.
Children's Music Workshop has about 24 schools where we do orchestra programs in the Los Angeles area. In 1999, we started the All Schools Elementary Honor Orchestra as a way to feature some of our better students in these music programs. We begin our honor orchestra rehearsals in January of each year with a small group of students who come to the UCLA Lab School on Sundays. Usually, we start with just the string players and rehearse for an hour and a half every week. We call this the chamber orchestra. As the concert date approaches, we begin to add the winds and develop a full symphony orchestra.
When we started chamber in January, we had a lot of new third graders and then we had a lot of experienced fifth and sixth graders. So it was really fun seeing, January, we got started. Nobody was bowing the same direction. And then all of a sudden, by the end of February, everybody was bowing together and they were laughing and they were enjoying that they sounded good and they could tell the difference. And they wa, they learned to watch the conductor more.
In addition to a great honor orchestra season, this was an especially exciting year for us with a number of very memorable events. In the spring, 16 of our public school students won music scholarships at the annual Les Cisma competition. Competing with students from more than 400 of the district's elementary schools, Children's Music Workshop students were well represented among the winning finals. To close out our school year, in June, we were invited to City Hall, where the Los Angeles City Council honored Children's Music Workshop for the company's efforts to further the cause of music education in Los Angeles schools.
The funnest thing is probably, um, just playing with everybody and listening to the sound and also the snacks.
Playing in the honor orchestra is important to me because I get to make new friends and play the violin because, and it is very fun to play.
I've been playing clarinet for what, four years now? Or something like that? And I've been wanting to do something with it for a while and this is a privilege that I can do something that is worth doing with a friend.
I have track, I do lots of sports and I'm just wanting to play music 'cause it sounds really, uh, really good and I feel confident about it when I play songs.
I can let out my feelings. I can choose the piece that corresponds to my attitude or emotion and I can just, if I play, if I play hard or if I play soft, it expresses how I feel right now.
I'm 11 years old and I'm in fifth grade at Country Canyon. I have to do my chores every day and play my instrument every day. My mom makes me practice at the laundry mat because it's too loud inside and then everyone can hear me. So I just walk to the laundry mat and shut all the doors, all the windows, and just practice all I want. Every time I get home, I have to just go to the laundry mat, get my instrument and play for an hour. Well, now, it makes me kind of famous because everyone at my apartment knows that I play the trumpet. Well, I found out that they're doing a scholarship and I, and I wanted to try out. So I tried out in front of all these judges at a college and I played "Take Me Out To The Ball Game." It was the easiest song I could find. When I went to the trumpet room, I practiced my chords, like scales, and just got warmed up. But I was nervous because I never did this before. And I practiced so hard. And then when I got in front of the judges, they loved me. They just like, were proud of me.
Very good, very good.
Very well prepared.
So that's how I knew I just was gonna win.
My dad used to play the trumpet, which probably got me into it because like, he used to have an old rusty trumpet and I would just blow in it. Well, it feels good that like, you're playing around other people and you feel like, I'm a pro, yeah, right.
If I feel stressed out or I had a bad day, I'll get my violin and maybe just sort of relax and start plucking one of my favorite songs and trying to sound it out. And sometimes that's kind of relaxing. I mean, knowing that I can play this kind of music makes me feel really good because I listen to it and it sounds beautiful. And with the orchestra, I listen to it and it's just gorgeous. It's just fun to listen to it. I've even seen kids that go to orchestra and their grades have improved and sometimes they were, they got in trouble a lot and they got into the music and they really liked it and that kind of picked them up a little bit and helped them out. And I've seen them, I mean, I knew them in kindergarten and they hated school and they wanted to leave. And now they're in fifth grade and they play music and they have a great time with it. And art and music are probably my two, uh, favorite subjects because I can really express myself through those and I think lots of kids can. I was just in a karate competition in November, was the, um, ISKF Nationals. So I was very proud of that. I have a horse in Canada, his name is Bon Chant. It means "good luck" in French. And we spend the whole day with the horse on Saturdays. And I ride an hour, my mom does too. Sometimes my sister walks around the ranch a little bit on the horse too. And we clean him and we really take care of him. So he's part of the family now. My mom's a movie producer and right now she's making a movie, which has gotten connections in Venezuela. So she now knows Gustavo Di Dono, who is going to be the new Philharmonic conductor for LA. And, um, he has become a good friend of ours. He spent Thanksgiving with us last year. And we went to Berlin to see his concert with the Berlin Philharmonic over New Year's, which was very fun. After the concert, we went over to dinner with him and some friends.
He's a friend of ours, a family friend. He's, he grew up in the youth orchestra. It's his life. And in Venezuela, it's worked, you know, with great success, even in the poorest neighborhoods, much poorer than we can imagine here in the, in the barrios of the poorest towns of Caracas, the poorest parts of Caracas. And so he wants to bring some of those ideas to Los Angeles. I would like to help him, if I can.
He wants me to start a concerto. I don't know if I'm ready for that yet. He said he started when he was 10, but he's a genius, definitely. Um, so that's definitely a goal, but I think that's gonna take a little while. It's also kind of fun knowing him 'cause with the whole Venezuelan youth orchestra, since I've seen their performances, I have completely changed the way I play my violin. The kids are excited about it and people are screaming every time when one of the members of the orchestra comes out and I think that's really cool.
The honors orchestra is a lot different from the orchestra at school. There's a way, a lot more people and they're from a lot of different schools. I, I don't really find it intimidating because it's not that scary. It's just people who are better than you. I don't, I don't find people better than be intimidating. I just find them, I don't know, just interesting.
Everything hooks up to something. So like, I also do climbing. So I use my feet and my, like, my hands too. And so, oh, my hands and my feet like, help me do the fingers on my violin. What I like about rock climbing is that you can challenge yourself with other routes. Just like in violin, you can play around with pieces. You can also look at different climbs and boulder problems. We use our hands to like, get us going and our feet. And in violin, sometimes you have to tap your foot and your foot might have to get stronger.
I think Vona will always remember this experience. There's no question in my mind that he's gonna be college and thereafter, probably with his children, he'll say, "I remember when I was a kid and I played in the orchestra for three, four years and it was just the most amazing experience and I, you know, I was so lucky to have gotten it." Because when I look at him, I think, I wish I had had that experience myself. So he's really lucky we have him in.
Sometimes, like in the beginning, it might sound kind of bad, but it's okay because, it's just because there's beginners and new people coming into the orchestra. I, I thought that I was kind of terrible because whenever I played, I either like, missed the sharp or forgot a flat in my piece. It's all right, and people make mistakes all the time, so it's not your fault. Instead of buying a disc and listening to music, you can actually play it and listen to it and feel really good about it. It's like, uh, it's like you're the artist more like it and like, you're listening to yourself and you can also be in an orchestra, which I think is a really, really exciting thing to do and be in.
I've been playing for four years now and I chose the violin because when I was small, I, this is the first instrument I saw and it really inspired me. It's also one of my dreams and, because I have a lot of dreams, the violin's like the most important one for me because it's like, it's like my one whole life dream. And I think I'm gonna play until I die.
So you have to put your fingers in the holes. And when you press certain keys, it makes the sound different. Like, if you do this, and then add these two keys, it's lower. But then, when you want to make higher notes, you press the register key and it goes higher. So you can go from this note to that note. So it has a reed, a ligature, and a mouthpiece. So you put your mouth over it like this. And then when you blow into it, the reed vibrates and makes a sound. And the ligature keeps the reed on the clarinet. Sometimes, if it breaks, you have to put on a new reed because these are very delicate. But there's different sizes of reeds. Now I play two and a half. They go up to five. And you can get like sixes personally made for you. My parents, they like, they like make me practice every day. They give me a practice log and they get me music. My dad made me write a report on the clarinet when I first started to play. My mom tells me like, if like, you, when you get older, if you're really good, you might have a career playing the clarinet, like in an orchestra. My mom is a magazine writer and my dad is a comedy writer for television. So, but he never laughs, never. Because he's heard every, almost every joke on the planet Earth. So.
Two, ready, buzz. Good. Two, ready, go. Short. No. What does short mean? Uh, yes, what does short mean? Really quickly.
I think every child should have the opportunity to have music in their life. And when I grew up, and it was a core subject. And I feel it really helped me in a lot of areas that I wasn't as strong in. Academically, music really helped me grow in those areas. And I have a very deep conviction that it should be offered during the school day to all kids.
Now, the second line, we went way too slow. Like, your grandmas and grandpas were playing, okay? It went really slow. So, can I hear that much? Ready, step up straight. One, two, here we go.
I'm supposed to practice every day for about 20 minutes or more. But that doesn't always work out with a very busy schedule. It's fun to like, know that I've learned all this and accomplished so much. Like, it's fun to play and make noise. I like how you can play all the notes, how you can play all different kinds of notes, and how you could be like, in an orchestra and play with other people who you like have never met before. Music is important in my life because I think it's a good way to express without words or like pictures. You can get like, a feel of hope, a joy. I chose the trumpet because it seemed cool. I like the sound. I normally practice like, in between school and whenever I have, like, a lot of times I have basketball practice. And so I normally, sometimes I practice in between there. And then where I practice at my home is normally like, right behind my couch. Like, a lot of time, there's a lot of counting that's involved and like, timing and precision. And so it kind of helps with like, math a little bit, like, with all the numbers. And it also helps with teamwork and like, maybe sports. A lot of times, it's easy to play your own part by yourself. But when you get with other people who are playing like, different parts, it might throw you off a bit. And so you kind of have to work with your other instruments, like the same one that you have. And then to like, kind of keep on track. And then while, you're also working with the like, different instruments to like, make it sound good.
Once there were three children named Woodwind, Brass, and Percussion. They lived with their father and mother in a small French cottage. Each evening, the children would take out their band instruments and play Papa's favorite folk song. One evening, Papa declared, "The mayor wants Woodwind, Brass, and Percussion to play a fugue at this year's town festival." "What an honor," said Mama. "Now run off to your rooms to practice." While practicing, Woodwind became bored and thought, "Why must I always play the music as written?" So Woodwind decided to play the music backward. Meanwhile, Brass grew frustrated and thought, "Why must I always play happy music?" So Brass decided to play the music in a minor key. Percussion, feeling unimportant, thought, "How come I must always play softer than Woodwind and Brass?" So Percussion decided to overpower the others. Weeks had passed and the festival day arrived. "Your attention," cried the mayor, "introducing Woodwind, Brass, and Percussion." "You better play softly," whispered Woodwind to Percussion. "And you better play your music as written," muttered Brass to Woodwind. "Please," begged the mayor, "stop quarreling and begin playing your family fugue." Filled with selfishness, each musician began to play his own way. "What was that?" bellowed the mayor. "We expected a family fugue and you played a family fugue." Woodwind, Brass, and Percussion were jolted and dismayed. Looking around, they could see disappointment on the townspeople's faces. Realizing that they had let individual pride get in the way of teamwork, the ragtag trio apologized to the mayor, the townspeople, and their parents. In getting one more chance to play, the three performed the best family fugue ever.
Playing the trombone is really important to me because it really brings out my spirit. And it's really wonderful to play with a lot of people. At first, you kind of feel scared to play in a big orchestra. But then, when you get to know everybody and you start playing, it feels a lot better. And it feels like you know everybody, even though you don't. Yeah, the trombone part is very, it's, a lot of times, it's the backtrack of the music. It's the kind of downbeat. But other times, when I'm lucky, I get to do the melody. Well, I chose the trombone at first because I liked how it slides. Really, I didn't really have a reason. But then, I kind of tested it out and I was like, "Ooh, this is fun." The most challenging part about playing the trombone is getting the right tune. Like, getting the right sound. Because there are really millions of different sounds that you can produce. And it's hard to get just the right one. You can change it with the buzz. So you can go like this. And really, I wasn't moving it. I was just going like this. I started singing when I was maybe three or four. And my mom said, "Well, you have a really good voice, Lauren. Why don't you take lessons?" And it got a lot more sophisticated. And now I sing opera. And I do a lot more than I thought I would do.
Say "dante."
Dante.
Say "repos."
Repos.
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 Can you, can you roll the r?
Not yet. Being part of the orchestra and just playing the trombone really makes me have better relationships with people. The social life of orchestra really helps you make friends. It does help you learn because you can see things more clearly in a different way. When you play trombone, you have to focus. You can't drop a note. So it helps you focus more on stuff. You just say, "I'm playing the trombone now. I can't get distracted," and you pass. Yeah, there aren't many girls who play trombone, let alone boys. There aren't many people who play trombone in the world. So it's a really good job to have because you'll have lots of windows of opportunity to do the trombone. So I think I will proceed and maybe be a professional someday. Lullaby and goodnight. In the sky, stars are bright. Round your head, flowers gay. Set your slumbers till day. Lullaby and goodnight. In the sky, stars are bright. Round your head, flowers gay. Set your slumbers till day. Close your eyes and rest. May these hours be blessed. Close your eyes and rest. May these hours be blessed.
I like teaching elementary in groups because I just, I love the energy. They'll do anything for you. Usually very positive.
Next week, rehearsal 11 o'clock.
I think the most challenging part for me, being a music teacher, is finding the happy balance between having fun, maintaining good discipline, and making good music.
That sounded really nice.
We are fraternal twins and we're glad about it.
I play clarinet.
No one thinks we're sisters until we tell them, which is kind of fun. And sometimes we fight over the music book because we only have one copy of it. She haunts it because she thinks it's hers.
It is mine.
It's not.
It's my folder.
It's not. Yeah, this is not my mouthpiece.
Mine.
It's hers.
But her.
It's La Vars.
Now, we do soccer.
We do soccer.
I do tennis.
We each do another sport separately.
And I do gymnastics.
I'm trying to remember what it was like when I got into honors and she didn't.
One time I used her clarinet.
Because her mouthpiece was working, so I had an extra, so I did it.
Yeah, this is not my mouthpiece.
Mine.
We're sis-sis-sis-sisters.
I think you learn things in music that you can't learn in any other environment aside from maybe sports. Sports doesn't really have the fulfilling sort of artistic quality that music does. It's so difficult to do it that if you conquer it as a kid, as a student, I think it makes you believe that you, with hard work and a certain amount of intelligence and teaching, that you can learn to do just about anything.
Arts and music instruction gives our students an opportunity to reach unprecedented heights. It allows them to explore their genuine gifts and talents. And that's really what I think is so important as we look at a whole child. And there's such a connection between the love of music and enhancing every child's cognitive development. So we have been thrilled to have the opportunity to offer our students a rich, well-balanced program that allows for that academic development on the one hand, and on the other hand, provides a variety of creative experiences that further enhances their cognitive development and appreciation of the world around them.
I would choose trumpet because it's an instrument that's harder to play. And I want to stand out so people would know me more. All I have to do is like puck your lips and spit a little. Except not "pff," just kind of like "pff," like that. Play music, it's fun. I like it. You'll probably like it also.
I think it has to be more than just being a passive observer. I think that one of my concerns is that, you know, thinking that just having kids listen to music is fine. I think they have to participate. They have to perform. And I think they should perform as early as they can. If it can be recorders in second or third grade, moving into instrumental music in third or fourth grade. I think that's the way that they learn.
The hardest part of playing the violin is that it's just if you get the fingering wrong, it can sound squeaky. I think in some wind instruments, it's easier to get the fingering right so it doesn't sound squeaky. If you accidentally play it wrong or do the fingering right wrong, it can sound like pretty annoying.
We're a parent-driven, nonprofit grassroots organization that formed to get the arts back into public schools. Public education is doing a disservice by not addressing both sides of the brain. So it's beyond just something nice. It's, I think, a critical component to a well-rounded education. Every year in March, in honor of Youth Art Month and Music Education Month, we hold a valley-wide student arts show and performing arts festival.
You'll see a lot of kids who are dressed up, who are real proud of themselves. Their families are going to be all dressed up. You're going to see great kid art on the walls. You're going to be part of a feeling. It's an energy. There's a vibe. There's something about this event. And then you're going to see kids who are going to be performing and taking a risk. They're going to be onstage in front of all these people. And they're going to be giving it their all. And they're going to see a lot of proud people watching these kids.
The show has evolved to this point. It's now a Family Arts Festival all day. We've got the performers and the visual artists and arts providers all in one place. This is my kind of crowd.
Since Arts and Education Aid Council is a nonprofit organization, we're completely dependent on donations from the community because we don't charge the children for our services or their parents or the schools. We're proving that we can make a dollar go a really long way. So it is very, very possible to give lots of kids lots of services if the money's managed in the right way. So we are always open to donations. They can call us or check out our website at www.aieac.org.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to LA Roundtable on LA City View 35. I'm Dave Bryan, the host of the Roundtable and political reporter at CBS 2 and KCAL 9 TV. The topic on this roundtable is "Let's Get It Right: Guilty or Innocent." We're talking about cases where an innocent person was convicted of a crime and, in many cases, sent to prison, sometimes for several years, before justice was finally done and the conviction was reversed. We've got a great panel to talk about this issue, these cases, why they sometimes happen, and what can be done to fix things. First of all, Michael Schwartz is a special assistant district attorney in the Ventura County DA's office. He's prosecuted many cases of all types and has done research in preparation for capital murder cases. He's also the conviction integrity deputy with the Ventura County DA's office. And we'll talk to him in a minute about what that means. Alex Simpson is the legal director of the California Innocence Project, which is based at California Western School of Law in San Diego. We want to thank you for joining us and thanking Michael as well. And Dan Simon, a professor of law and psychology at USC and the author of "In Doubt: The Psychology of the Criminal Justice System." He's done a great deal of research on why innocent people are sometimes convicted of crimes they didn't commit. So what I want to do to get things started is I want to have each one of you talk about, what is the issue here in terms of getting these cases right? What is the issue or what is the problem? And what is your connection to the issue? And Dan, we'll start with you.
Sure. Thanks very much for having this panel. It's a vital issue. What I think is important to understand is that the criminal justice process is driven to a large degree by human inputs. It's witnesses and detectives and lawyers and judges and jurors all contributing something to the process. And that something is basically some form of cognitive input. It's a memory. It's a judgment. It's an inference. It's a decision. And the experimental psychology suggests that people don't do all of these things perfectly. And they certainly don't do them perfectly in contexts which are really burdensome and onerous and complicated. And investigating and adjudicating criminal cases can be really difficult. So my work really looks at what might be the causes, the psychological underpinnings of when people get things right and when people get things wrong. And the overall sense from the literature is that we have an appreciable rate of error in the evidence that we produce through trial. And I would very much like to see the criminal justice system come to terms with that and adopt better procedures to actually minimize these risks.
Alex?
Well, I absolutely think that that's correct. I think the issue is that we have a criminal justice system that is not perfect and it's completely fallible at a number of different levels, both in terms of the investigation of a particular case to the prosecution, to the defense of a particular case. You know, a lot of the things that I do as the legal director of the California Innocence Project is I look through cases to find out whether or not there was some problem with the case originally. So even if you don't look at some of the new advances through, say, for example, DNA, there are a lot of cases that have human input and human error that are kind of built into the system. And so, you know, in terms of the issue, I think that what we're trying to do is unpack some of those problems and at least acknowledge that when we're talking about a criminal prosecution, just because a jury comes back and says that the person's guilty, that doesn't necessarily mean that the person may have done it.
Michael, you're the prosecutor here. I suspect you have a slightly different point of view, maybe.
Not really. Our job is to convict the guilty and exonerate the innocent. The Supreme Court has said that we have a dual duty, that the guilty shall not escape and the innocent shall not suffer. And our job is to try and get it right. I think in the vast number of cases, we do get it right. But it would be naive to say that the system is perfect. And we know that it isn't. We've all read stories from Texas and other places around the country where someone has served sometimes decades in prison and then has been exonerated by DNA evidence where it is proved conclusively that they didn't do it. So that's an important reminder to us that as prosecutors, that the system is not So that's an important reminder to us that, as prosecutors, that the system is not perfect and that we need to do as much as we can to try and get it right. The idea that someone would serve a prison sentence for a crime they didn't commit is a terrible tragedy. And, I mean, not only for that person, but for society. While they're sitting in prison, the real criminal may be out and may be killing or raping other people. So it's a bad deal all the way around.
Now, you're the conviction integrity deputy, which is somewhat a unique position, at least here in Southern California. So what exactly do you do, then, with regard to these cases? What is your connection?
When we get a claim from a defense attorney or defendant on a completed case that they are factually innocent, we will review the claim and determine whether there's any merit to it. In some cases, it may be something that can be done fairly quickly. Other times, we may have to go out and interview witnesses, review all the transcripts, and determine whether there is a possibility that the person is actually innocent.
I don't mean to be cynical, but doesn't everyone say they're innocent even after they're convicted? I mean, are you reviewing all the cases?
No. When we first announced the program, I was concerned that we would get a flood of claims. We started the program late last year, and we received six requests during that period. So, and there are many defendants who admit they're guilty. Many plead guilty. So it's not everybody.
Of the six that you've gotten, have any of them, have you proceeded with any of them, or have they all been rejected? I mean, what's the outcome?
So far, we've only completed two of them, and we rejected both of those. So we're looking at all of them with an open mind.
So when we talk about innocent people being convicted and going to jail, I mean, what percentage of all the cases is this? You said, Dan, that it's too high. What is too high? What does that mean? What is the percentage?
You know, we will never know what the percentage is, and we certainly don't know that number now. The data are just way too murky, and we've got too little, too few indicia of actual guilt and actual innocence to determine that number. The best estimates that are out there put it at somewhere in the range of 2% to 5% of the cases. And I think it's important to remember that, as Mr. Schwartz said, you know, the vast majority of people sitting in prison are actually guilty. So this, nobody is out to condemn the system wholesale. The question is, how much do we care about those people who, you know, where we miss, who are put in, you know, despite their innocence? And whether it's two or whether it's five, I think the point should really be one of, as a society, what we should do is try to minimize that number, and not at all costs, but at all reasonable cost, and actually really put a serious effort into it. And I'm happy to say that we're at a better time today than we were 10 years ago. And the kind of consensus that you're hearing around this panel is a good testament that we're on our way to there. I would just say that though there's, you know, DNA exonerations are very dramatic, as they should be probably, that's not the solution. We have DNA evidence in too few cases. And anyway, we don't want to wait 5, 10, 20, some, 30 years to try to correct a wrong that was done. We should be much more focused on preventing these things upfront. And there are actually fairly good protocols that are based on science, and on common sense, by the way, that we could actually do to change the process upfront and just prevent these errors. That's the way to go, really.
So to prevent them, Alex, you have to know why they're occurring in the first place. So why do these kinds of cases occur? What are the most common causes of a conviction that's wrong?
You know, there, I'd hate to say that there's a particular bread-and-butter type case that we see in the California Innocence Project. I think some of the things that we see fairly often are cases of ineffective assistance of counsel. Here in LA, you know, we have hundreds of people who go through the system every single day, and every single one of them has a lawyer, but that lawyer may have 100 or even 200 cases on their docket. And so that invites error. That invites an inability to look through every single case with a fine-tooth comb. But there are other things that, in terms of nationwide, what we've seen in the innocence movement is cases such as eyewitness identification, which there's a number of studies that show that what we originally thought was so powerful and so convincing, even though it may be very convincing, it's not necessarily very accurate. Eyewitness identification is a very powerful tool in the courtroom, but it's not necessarily the best, most reliable evidence. Other issues have to do with false admissions or false confessions. There are some situations where bad science is introduced against an individual. So any particular case may have a combination of those factors or some different factor altogether.
Well, we're going to run a piece now. This is a report that was done on KCAL 9 in May of last year, about a year ago, about a rape case involving a man named Brian Banks. And this is the news report that ran about how that conviction was overturned. I hope we can see it in the studio here because I'm going to ask you to talk about it afterwards. So let's go ahead and roll that and take a look at the story.
A former Long Beach high school football star starting a new life tonight as a free man. After years in prison, Brian Banks was set free after his accuser admitted she falsely accused him of rape. KCAL 9's Stacy Butler is live in Long Beach with Banks' emotional story. Stacy?
Breakers Brian Banks sat in a jail cell for five years, who was consumed with one thought: his freedom. Today, in a gut-wrenching day in court, he got it.
My only dream in the world was to just be free.
Brian Banks has dreamed of this day for 10 years.
The people will concede the matter, Your Honor, and ask the court to grant the petition.
Right. Petition is granted.
Exonerated of a rape he never committed. A decade ago, Brian Banks was a star football player at Long Beach Polytechnic High School. Heavily recruited by colleges, he had a full scholarship to USC. A career in the NFL was inevitable, but that all changed when Winetta Gibson, also a student, accused him of kidnapping and raping her in 2002. Banks' attorney advised him to plead no contest. He was convicted.
It wasn't a choice that I made. I didn't choose to plead guilty. I didn't choose to plead no contest. I was forced into it. It was a decision that I was proposed with, and I had 10 minutes to make that decision without even being able to consult my parents.
Banks spent five years in prison.
At that age, you expect your attorney to be the person that you can depend on and count on to make those, you know, give you the right advice and decisions to make. And so I took the plea.
For the last five years, he hasn't once removed his ankle bracelet, a requirement for the rising football star branded a sex offender. The judge overturned his conviction today after reviewing a videotape of Banks' accuser recanting her story. Winetta Gibson recently contacted Banks on Facebook to make amends. He arranged a meeting with her and his private investigator, who works with the Innocence Project. She told him she lied about the rape. They were awarded $1.5 million.
All that money they gave us, I mean, gave me, I don't want to have to pay it back all that because that will take a long time.
Banks says he's no longer angry.
It's impossible to do with anger or bitterness. You know, you have to forgive and move on.
That's a pretty powerful story about the impact that a bad conviction can have on a person's life, and a very powerful report. What does this story, this report, say about this issue? What's the significance of this case? Is this sort of a typical case that you find? Or are there certain themes, you know, that come out? I mean, what does it mean?
Yeah, I mean, Brian's case was absolutely not typical. We have here a person who's come forward to admit that they falsely accused an individual of sexual assault and is comfortable coming forward to admit that years later. She actually contacted him on Facebook after he got out and said, you know, "Let's let bygones be bygones." You know, that's a very rare situation to happen, and we're very kind of thankful that she decided to do the right thing in the long run. You know, typically, when we're talking about innocence cases, we're talking about something that happened a long time ago that you can have some sort of autopsy about either the trial or about the investigation and kind of unpack what happened way back when. You know, it's an interesting kind of thing about innocence in that when you see a case like Brian Banks or you see other cases that we have in the media, you know, we don't really look into the causes, the underlying causes behind it, in the same way. Say, for example, if you have a plane crash, well, all the planes that are in that fleet get investigated, they get pored over until we find out what the reason is. And we don't do that with the criminal justice system. In fact, what we say is that it must be just this one isolated case, and let's move on, essentially with the same things that we had in the past. And I think that's a real shame.
Well, do you think that in a case like this, were there other things when you looked, because you are the Innocence Project, and I assume you had a direct connection to this case? So were there other things about this trial that allowed something to go on like this? I mean, you can't do anything about someone lying necessarily, you know. You can't necessarily prevent that. But were there other things wrong with this case that maybe shouldn't have happened that contributed in some way?
Well, I think the number one thing that was very obvious when we started to look into the Brian Banks case was that Brian's attorney gave him a choice of deciding between 41 years to life or, at that time, it was only a 16-month sentence. And he only gave him 10 minutes to make that decision.
So innocence was not a choice?
Yeah, it's, well, you could certainly, the offer was either a 16-month sentence, plead guilty to a lesser offense, or you can go to trial and face 41 years to life. And Brian has been very candid about saying that his attorney explained to him that, you know, he was going to be perceived of as a very big black man, and he, his chances, especially considering this woman was going to be very believable in saying that she'd been sexually assaulted, his chances were not very good.
And we're not talking about Alabama or Mississippi here. We're talking about California.
Sure. But I think the two things to pull from that are, number one, you know, we need to look into making sure that people have enough time to consider all of the available angles, that the attorneys need to have everything available to them. And secondly, that, you know, when we're talking about plea bargains, the prosecutor's office has a tremendously large amount of power. And sometimes, even in a case where somebody wants to protest their innocence, like Brian Banks, that may not even be an option because the sentence that they're facing is so large, it's so much better to take a deal.
Michael, as a prosecutor, do you agree with that analysis?
I do, actually. And I think this is, this is not from our county, but what strikes me is the disparity between the possible sentence of 41 to life and the offer of five years of actual custody time. And that really can frustrate the truth-finding process where you're faced with sort of an impossible choice. In Ventura County, we've had a no plea bargaining policy since 1978. So we would not charge a, correct. We would not charge a kidnap that carries a life term and let someone plead guilty to a charge that carries a five-year term. So I think the plea bargaining system can, there are instances in which there's agreed-upon sentences, and it's not, and it is appropriate, but I think if there's a huge disparity there between the possible sentence and an offer, you really, it can frustrate the justice system.
And are prosecutors under a lot of pressure to convict, convict, convict? Because the conviction rate is important to the district attorney's office. It's certainly a consideration when a DA is running for reelection. You're expected to, you know, to win cases that the office decides to proceed with. You don't take all the cases, but those that you do, I assume there's pressure to get it.
I see my mission as getting it right and to reaching a just result, not getting, not necessarily winning. If we had a prosecutor that was routinely losing half or more of their cases, I would wonder, we can't have, they can't all be innocent. I mean, I would wonder about their abilities as a trial attorney. But things do happen in trial, and we're aware of that. And there's a lot of screening that goes on before we get to trial. We carefully review cases before we charge them. We reject about 25% of the cases before we even file them. We have committee discussions on felony cases before we actually proceed to trial. So generally, when we go to trial, it's because the prosecutor, well, if we go to trial, it's because the prosecutor believes the defendant is guilty.
Yeah.
And I don't see it as a numbers game.
And Dan, when you look at these cases, I mean, how many of them are cases like this with just false testimony that, you know, and no one could have prevented except the person that did it? How many are prosecutorial misconduct of some kind? And how much are just, sometimes, human judgment is wrong?
Right. And that's a crucial point. And that is, we are humans, we're fallible, and we are going to have a certain, you know, level of error, and we're probably going to have to live with that reality. The real point is that errors are not just created spontaneously, such as forgetting where you put your car keys or where you parked your car. Many of the mistakes that show up in wrongful convictions are mistakes that can be considered induced. They're induced by someone else or by the procedure that was used in the investigative process. Those are the mistakes that are preventable, and those are the ones we should indeed focus on. As for your question, if you look at the largest database that we have of exonerations, which can be found on the web at the National Registry of Exonerations, suggests that about the most common cause, actually, for the exonerations is some form of perjury or false accusation.
I see.
And, but the ones that follow it closely are mistaken eyewitness identifications, which is to the tune of about 40% of the cases. There are, as Alex mentioned, there are also considerable number of cases with some sort of official misconduct, which, as Mike suggested, isn't always deliberate misconduct. It can be an innocent error, too. But 15% of the cases are false confessions, which should be another kind of troubling statistic, is that people actually confessing to crimes they didn't commit. And we're not talking about the plea bargains, where you might make a rational choice facing 41 years to life vis-à-vis 16 months, or what turned out to be five years in the Brian Banks case. But we're talking about people who actually undergo a pretty difficult and taxing interrogation procedure, which actually causes them to really perjure themselves. And that's something that really requires more attention.
We're down to the last couple of minutes, believe it or not. And I want to ask each of you about DNA. How much has that changed the landscape? As particularly at a time when we were talking about CSI and other discussion earlier, everyone thinks DNA is the be-all and the end-all in every case. And has DNA and other technological advances, has it improved things in terms of getting it right?
I think the number of innocent people being convicted has gone down as a result of DNA. And Professor Simon mentioned the National Registry of Exonerations. They have counted about 1,010 exonerations in a 23-year period, which sounds like a lot. But during that same time period, there have been 24 million convictions in the United States. So we're talking about 0.004%, which is a small number. Now, that's too many, too. That's 1,000 tragedies that should have been averted. But DNA evidence has, helps us identify defendants and provide evidence of guilt, but it also helps exonerate people and show that they didn't do it. So I think it's a real step forward in the truth-finding process. And I don't see it as winning or losing for either side. I think both sides win when we get it right.
Alex?
You know, I think DNA is a tremendous tool, both for the work that we do at the California Innocence Project and for, you know, the average case that comes forward. But DNA is not available in most cases. In fact, even in very, very violent cases.
Not available?
Yeah, sure. If you're talking about a drive-by shooting, for example, that's an incredibly serious crime. Somebody has been murdered because of it. But the likelihood that you're going to get any kind of DNA or biological material or something like that is non-existent because there isn't really any kind of contact with the perpetrator and the victim. So, you know, the statistic of that there's only 1,100 cases that have involved DNA exonerations over the last 24 years, and so 0.004% is in some way indicative of the amount of innocent people that we have behind bars, is just not true. Most of the cases that go through the criminal justice system don't have DNA attached to them. So it's a great tool for the cases that it relates to.
Dan, you get the, the good news is you get the last word. The bad news is there's only about 40 seconds left. The bad news is there's only about 40 seconds left.
So I'll just, I agree with what's being said, with the exception of Mike suggesting that the percentage of innocent of false convictions is so low. I think you're going to have to schedule us for another session because that number is actually quite misleading for lots of reasons. And given the amount of time I have left, I will just say that many, a large portion of exonerations are discovered by flukes, such as the Brian Banks case. Who would have guessed that the alleged victim would friend him on Facebook, want to meet and recount on tape? So, and there are many other such cases where the evidence was supposed to have been destroyed and by fluke it gets discovered. So really what we do have is what we can see is 1,100 such cases, but they are really a tip of an iceberg. So the problem is deeper. But rather than argue about the numbers, I think we should focus on how to prevent these things.
Hey, thank you all very much. It was a great discussion and a fascinating topic. We hope that you at home learned something. I know I certainly did. We appreciate your watching. And from all of us here at LA Roundtable, so long for now.